The mayor will not be in attendance tonight. Unfortunately, she's still working on trying to place residents on Plum Island and get them off the island, so that's where she will be today. And I just hope everyone out there is safe. Before we start our meeting, I'd like to -- Mrs. Kenny, could you do a roll call?
Yes. Mr. Menon?
Present.
Ms. Menon?
Present.
Mr. Cole?
Here.
Mr. DeCanta?
Here.
Mayor Holliday is absent.
Mr. Lutens?
Here.
Ms. McCann?
Here.
Could we stand for the pledge? And before we do the pledge, I'm going to ask Mr. Cole to recognize two people that we would like to have a moment of silence for before we begin.
Thank you. I'd like to have a moment of silence to remember Ms. Peg Fuller-Turanda, who passed away on January 18th, and also Mr. Michael Stone, who passed away on February 15th. Ms. Turanda took her first job in the Newburyport School District after she got out of college. Proceeded to -- after teaching here for a while, proceeded to go to New Jersey and teach some more, returned here and finished her teaching career with more than 20 years of experience in our school district. She was instrumental in fostering the Swayze Fund to support retired teachers. She was the daughter of the late Bradley Fuller. Some of you, I'm sure, are aware that Mr. Fuller was the vice chair of the school committee for over 40 years, and Fuller Field is dedicated after him. And she was also founded a scholarship in both his and her mother's name, which still helps NHS students today. Mike Stone was an alumnus of Newburyport High School, St. Michael's College. He served his country as a second lieutenant in the Army Rangers during the Vietnam War. He retired from the IRS after a long career. Mr. Stone was not only a gentleman, he was a gentle man. He helped with many local causes such as Opportunity Works. He was always willing to lend a hand. He was the husband of recently retired Newburyport High School teacher Susan Stone, father of daughter Jamie, and son Jeff, as well as grandson Cashman. He leaves siblings Barbara, Jeffrey, Chris, along with many nieces and nephews. Please join me in a moment of silence.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So could you please remain standing for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It's nice you all found parking spaces. This brings us to our session of public comment. We begin every meeting wanting to hear from you if there is something you would like to share with the school committee. We would ask you to stand, come up and join us either at the table or on camera, state your name, and tell us what you'd like to talk with us about. And if we haven't answered this evening, we will be more than willing, happy, glad to provide you with one. So is there a public comment at this time? Yes.
Ralph Orlando, for William Hall Drive. As always, I want to preface my statements by stating that there are comments to be directed to school committee members on. First thing I want to talk about is the budget. I'm a little disheartened that very little has been discussed thus far, and that many of you sitting on your side of the table over the last several years have asked for much earlier discussion of the budget. For me, the budget discussion should become a part of your October agenda in that it makes no sense to me to plan next year's budget by looking at the budget from the previous year. You need to look at a budget that's based on expenditures when you close out the year to see exactly what was spent on their every given item, and I've never seen that done in the last 10 or 11 years that I've been here. The second topic I'd like to bring up, like budget, is policy, and I believe those are both areas under which you have some jurisdiction. This particular policy deals with bullying. And as I think many of you know, recently, or actually a while ago, but only recently brought to the press, there are some issues dealing with bullying at the high school, some of which were rather severe, some of which verged on being criminal acts such that we had to have a statement from the marshal in the press. Now, I don't know, I'm a parent of a student at the high school, and I heard nothing of it until I read the article. I'm assuming that you had some knowledge of that, because it's something that I think is rather severe in nature. The bullying policy here, as you recall, initially was rejected by the state. We had to redo it. I think an act such as that really warrants you taking a look at the bullying policy, seeing if it was followed, asking what's done for remedial work at the high school. I think some discussions to students, parents, on what lack of tolerance of ethnic backgrounds, what it is to bully people, how you prevent it, and how you remediate it. I've heard nothing from this group, and that event took place a long time ago. So I urge you, at some point, to bring up that conversation. Just like the lockdown generated a great deal of concern and a forum was held, I think all the students in the school should be brought through an educational program on the topic of bullying and tolerance of religious differences, because a near criminal act, the next time it occurs, may become a criminal. And your continued silence is a concern of mine.
Dr. Orlando?
Appreciate the opportunity to monologue with you.
Dr. Orlando, I'd like to respond to you.
Is that a chair?
Yes.
Is this now a dialogue?
Yes.
Okay. I just want you to know that after the incident, that classes were met with and individual classes were spoken to. And what I can tell you is that, from my perspective, we followed our policy. We need to take into account the fact that we are required to look at student confidentiality, and we are required by law to do a full investigation, and that takes time.
I understand.
There were a number of students that were involved in the situation, and this took a great deal of time for us to speak with individual students, to follow through with our procedures, and to make decisions. We had our attorney involved in the process to make sure that we were crossing Ts and dotting the Is in this process. And I asked for guidance in the beginning of this process, because it was a very complicated one. So I would like to assure you that, from my perspective and from the school district's attorney perspective, we did do our due diligence in this process, and we always need to be mindful of the -- of student confidentiality. And we are never going to violate that. And we also need to be cognizant of the fact that every student, we have to look at their rights and their privacy rights, and we have to be mindful of that. So it is a very careful process that we work through whenever we're dealing with any type of bullying incident. We want to make sure that we are being fair to the victim, and we are looking at the victim's rights as well as looking at the potential perpetrator's rights.
In due respect to you, sorry, go ahead, Mr. Menon.
No, I would hope to be recognized to add something to that.
Mr. Menon?
There, the --
I would like an opportunity to respond as well, please.
Thank you.
Yeah, the Commission on Tolerance and Diversity met last night, and they have set a date for a community forum that's going to be called -- Newburyport says no to prejudice, a community forum. That will be taking place in the first week in April. There's going to be a lot of publicity about that, a lot of conversation, and at that point, I think, we will have an appropriate community conversation. I appreciate what the superintendent has said. I'm looking forward to a lessons learned conversation, because I think that there were opportunities that we had, I think, to communicate a little bit more effectively than we did.
And I have to say that I was a little disappointed that, as a member of the Commission on Tolerance and Diversity, that I did not know about the meeting last night, and that I found out about it yesterday. So I was a little disappointed with that.
Yes.
And in all due respect, I didn't question your performance of your duties. I think this school committee in charge of policy needs to investigate this process to see how it was conducted, whether it was conducted properly. Are they happy with the current bullying policy and the way it's taken care of? I think it's time to take a little review of that. And as a parent of a student in the school, I have any knowledge of it. To be quite honest with you, my daughter claimed she had no knowledge of it after the newspaper article appeared. And so I believe that the school committee has a right to take a look at this, and I ask you, have you been made aware of that? Would you have asked for something else to be done? I don't know if the first time you became aware of it was when it appeared in the newspaper. It's time to take a look at the policy and how you go about investigating it, and how you go about remediating the students in terms of so that they know what bullying is about, they know what anti-Semitic behavior is about, and they know how to recognize it, report it, things of that nature. I sent you an email on the Somerville program and for prevention. Have we a program like that? Have we conducted a survey on bullying and what the students tell you about bullying in our district? Those are the kinds of things that I believe this committee has an obligation to assure is getting done so that the students are protected as well on both sides of the bullying.
I want to respond. One other comment I would like to make is that, as the superintendent, when there are incidents that happen in any school, the entire school community is not necessarily entitled to know about that. There are privacy rights involved, there are discipline issues that have to be addressed. That doesn't mean the entire school community necessarily is privy to the incident. It's entirely dependent on the situation, and there are a number of variables that color every single situation that happens. And in my 34 years of being in education and the last 12 as a superintendent, I can tell you that I have never had the same incident happen twice. There are always different variables involved, and you have to weigh those variables to make sound decisions that are always about the children involved. That's my bottom line, is that it's about the students who are involved. And yes, you do have to look at the larger school community, and you have to look at the impact that could possibly be had on the larger school community. But as I said, every situation is an individualized one, and one in which you need to carefully proceed and make good decisions for all of the children who are involved.
And again, I don't think you need to identify who the students are as opposed to what the topic is or what the problem was. And I will finish by starting -- by ending with what I said at the onset. The conversation I wish to have is between school committee members, and I think you have an obligation to the citizens of Newburyport for sure that this is the manner in which you wish to have this conducted as we move forward, and use it, as Mr. Menon said, a lessons learned. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
I was waiting for the difference.
Hearing that, we're going to move on in our agenda. Mr. Menon, do we have warrants this evening?
We have warrants, we have no conflicts, but I don't think that's an issue, actually.
No.
So I move that the following named bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate to $25,125.29 be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I move that the following named bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate to $337,906.22 be approved, forwarded to the city auditor for payment.
Second. Do I hear -- did you second?
I second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Is that it, Mr. Menon?
That is it.
I'd like to call the committee's attention to the Newburyport School Committee Business Meeting, notes from Tuesday, January 20th. Could I hear a motion, please?
I move the approval of the notes from the business meeting to January 30th.
Second. Discussion, corrections? All those in favor of adopting?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. I feel like I'm doing -- whoops, be in the paper hanger here. I think those are the only minutes we have, actually. Julia Bradley, I feel like I introduce you every time. I don't know if everybody already knows who you are, but you are our most valuable high school rep to the school committee. What's going on?
Well, yesterday, the seniors started the book to film project, which is the, like, last major project that seniors will do in high school, and everyone's very excited about that. There's a poetry soup tomorrow at Jabber Rocky at 7:00. The science fair will be held on the 26th. It's prom season again. They're already selling tickets for junior prom, which is whatever. And then we're also planning a spirit week, which will happen March 16th, and that whole week we have different dress-up days, like a hat day or pajama day, and we have fundraisers going that whole week, and we're trying to put a pep rally together for the end of the week, too.
And the fundraisers are for what?
The one that we're doing, the main one, is for the senior class. We did it last year, and it was very successful, and we gave all that money to the senior class as well.
And that program you said the seniors were starting, was it books to film?
Book to film, yeah.
Angela, is that what we saw during our public forum? Isn't that what Lynn Cody?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
I'm just trying to make a connection, because that was unbelievable.
Yeah.
I'm just, that's great.
Wonderful project.
That's great. Where's the prom?
I don't know. Usually it's at the Granite Rose, but I've heard the Granite Rose is closing, so it's going to be interesting. I'll find out.
Thank you. Any questions for Julia? Thank you. If you have a homework or whatever. Next, I would like to recognize the principals from the Bresnahan School, Amy Sullivan and Christina Davis, and any members of your school council that you brought with you this evening. Would you like to come and join us?
Would you like to counsel someone as well?
Yes.
Because they were in the [inaudible].
Perfect. Let me just say that one of the reasons we love to see, you know, your school council here is we know what valuable input they've given into this school improvement plan, and often the work is done behind the scenes and shared with us by the principals. So thank you so much for coming out tonight to share this, your school improvement plan, and I hope you'll introduce peoples, people in your, on your team.
I absolutely will.
Thank you.
Can you hear me? Here we have teacher Carrie Lynch, our community representative, Peter McClure, parent David Hockeiser, parent Karen Lockwood, and parent Lauren Rafferty, and principal Amy Sullivan.
And principal Christina Davis.
We're happy to be here. Thank you. And I'd like to thank all of you for joining us tonight. Okay. Can I just do a little introduction? The school committee has had the opportunity to have your plan, to look at it. Great. And so what I would suggest that you do is really, you know, sort of highlight your priorities, and just talk about your priorities.
Well, I think first we wanted to tell the school committee that we were very fortunate last year to first bring together a joint council for the planning of the new Bresnahan. And although some of the players have changed, our council has grown and has continued some of the initial thoughts that the joint Brown and Bresnahan Council had brought together. And we had such a great response this year to, for interest in our school council, both from staff members and parents alike. We had a good election, and we have a lot of very thoughtful minds, and we've had some pretty great conversations to bring us to this point. So I just want to thank the council for being here this evening.
I think we should also acknowledge the folks that were able to be here with us tonight, and they are teacher Julie Doyle, teacher Lisa Bartholomew, teacher Linda Greshinny, parent Gail Conway, parent Ted Waldron, and parent Jane Ducha. We have a very large council this year as a result of the schools coming together. So as you know, our plan is based on the district goals, and you had an opportunity to review those. Our first one aligns with the continued implementation of the educator evaluation system. And as you know, all the schools in the district are focusing on the implementation of the DDMs that were developed and approved last spring. So that's really a highlight for this year's implementation of the plan and for where we are with the educator evaluation.
And I would just add that one of the things that we really strove to make easier for the teachers was to also align our categories to the new teacher evaluation standard. So when you look at the program categories, you'll see that they match up with standards one, two, three, and four. We thought that that would be helpful for the teachers to continue that alignment on down. So we thought we'd just talk about some of the activities that we have done and plan to do, since this is a two-year plan, and part of this plan has already begun for the current school year and will also take us into the next school year.
Okay. So in regards to curriculum, as you know, Engage New York is under, is in full implementation. We have a new phonics program for current kindergartners and first graders, and for next year, we'll be extending that to second grade. And then our plan for the following year is to extend the phonics curriculum into third grade. And Amy, might, do you want to speak at all to MKEA?
Sure. Well, I did a pretty thorough presentation about that earlier this year, but we did complete our first kindergarten entry assessment benchmark. We're going to be reviewing some reports this month and then getting ready to prepare for our end-of-the-year data. And then looking to next year, we realized that we need to, we've done a lot of shift of our focus to tweak our ELA program with the new phonics at our grade level, and the Engage New York is going very nicely, but we also need to take note of the next generation science standards. And we've done not as comprehensive work with that this year, but preparing for, a lot of teachers have participated in STEM workshops. We're hoping that we might be able to have a little steering committee, perhaps with Angela Bick's help, and really try to shift our focus next year on the next generation science standards, so that you'll see that.
Sorry, I was going to also say, and with Elizabeth Kinsley's support as our STEM coordinator.
Yes, I'm sorry. Need to shirk Dr. Kinsley. So the next category is families and community, and, you know, I think just coming together as one school, combining two administration teams, combining grade levels, has really, you know, helped us to think about what we want our communication to be. And so I feel like that's ongoing, and I feel like we're in good sync right now, but we always want to continue to strive with everything in terms of timely communication to parents, you know. I don't know how many times we've changed different dismissal rival procedures this year, but, you know, day-to-day operations, and some of it, I think, we think is a work in progress. You know, we are going to have to go through a full academic year to see, you know, what works and what doesn't work, but we've put a lot of systems in place to try to keep the lines of communication open, both within the school and also to the school community, and we're really excited about the launch of the new website.
Additionally, I just want to point out a couple of things, and homework is an area that we need to focus on, so that we can reach consensus across grade levels throughout our school on what homework expectations should be, what is the purpose of homework, communicating with parents. We're actually going to begin looking at some articles tomorrow about homework at our staff meeting, and we're also going to be doing the same thing at our next school council meeting. We were scheduled to have a council meeting on one of us' snow days, so it didn't happen, but that's coming up. And then dependent on how we move forward, we may even end up establishing a homework committee, if that is required, to get to a place where we're comfortable with it. This is something that Tara Rossi initiated already in the fall at the Molin School. We're going to be learning more about their expectations so that we can also feed in to the fourth grade with our third graders and being prepared for that level of rigor at the Molin. Additionally, we are wanting to really communicate with parents, because we're realizing, even with open house and all through the, all year with parent conferences and so forth, there is still a need for additional communication with parents regarding curriculum and assessment. And so we've been communicating via our weekly bucket full of news to parents. There was a series of mathematics articles, and now we're in the thick of articles about literacy. We also had a morning coffee for parents to visit our school and to learn about Engage New York and to participate with students as they presented what they're learning, and also the parents had an opportunity to engage with the resources and solve problems and so forth. So we're beginning to focus more on the communication in regards to curriculum. Additionally, our coffees this year, our principals' coffees, are also focusing on curriculum.
So just to kind of keep it going throughout the year, we realized that we, you know, get the parents in the beginning of the year and focus a lot on our open houses, and then the year starts, and, you know, just to kind of keep that momentum going with kind of previewing what's ahead for the next semester, so that's sort of where our focus is, in just establishing some different activities to get parents into the fold. And I do, we have received a lot of good feedback in regard to the series that we've run and the bucket full, so it's nice to know that people have enjoyed that and they're reading that. And we talked recently, I think, at our last meeting, long before all these snow days, that different, to add different things into our weekly newsletter, like a spotlight on a student or famous quotes or something like that, that would kind of lure parents in to, you know, see something about their child, but then also read some of the academic and curricular areas of information. Okay, the next.
We should, we sit side by side, so we're in sync.
Well, it's actually helpful to be able to look at the press. Okay. So professional culture is our next area, a program area that aligns with standard four in the evaluation system. And we just started with a very broad area, and we have a lot of different things that we would like to break down. And it's just to continue to develop professional relationships amongst the staff that will support and continue to enhance the new pre-K to 3 model.
And beyond that, we also are following our superintendent's lead in terms of the core ethical values, and there will be a committee that will be working on the development of those. And then we will take it from there as the Breznerhand School, um, and move forward with the values. And we're thinking this will move more into next year than, um, this year at each of the sites. So that's something that's quite exciting.
Oh, no, just add to that, and it is, um, a little bit in one of the other categories that we would like to do, um, more civic appreciation and understanding with the students for, we're so fortunate here in Newburyport to have organizations like the NEF and the, um, PTO. Um, and we're really looking forward to the senior center being completed and reaching out to the council and agent to see how we can foster that relationship. So whether it is, um, some other ways of saying thank you, or whether it's involving the children in some more, um, civic and community celebrations, that's a focus that we would really like to try to establish as well or grow on, I should say, because we do do a lot of things already, but to continue that momentum.
We actually have community readers coming in on Monday in honor of Dr. Seuss's birthday, Read Across America. And many of those volunteers are coming from the Rotary, um, and it's initiated by Sue Thomas. She's just been instrumental in, in being very consistent with, with that each and every year and the children love it.
And you're filled up because I was at the Rotary meeting today and you have, you're completely filled up.
I know, Sue sent an email today, which is great.
And I'd just like to recognize Emily Ruston, our literacy coordinator, who's helped with that, and also Pamela Ellis, um, in the library, um, at the Breznerhand have really been involved in helping to get the community readers in, and so we're excited for Monday.
Our final, um, program, um, our final program objective is related to teaching all students. Um, and we're focusing on increasing learning opportunities for all. This year, as you all know, we have brought on a math interventionist. And, um, our math interventionist is just doing a fantastic job, reaching all grades, K through three, reaching a broad spectrum of students, spending the majority of each and every day in the classrooms, engaged with teachers and students. And it's been really wonderful to see how classroom teachers and the interventionists are beginning to develop a co-teaching model as they're simply becoming more comfortable with each other. Please remember, our interventionists end up joining us until mid-fall. And so it's quite exciting to see, um, how this is playing out as this is the first time we've had somebody in this role. Um, and the teachers are very, very confident that, um, we are moving in a positive direction and that we're tapping into many students. And we're right down to supporting students with foundational skill development that they're lacking, in addition to deeper conceptual thinking and learning, which is wonderful.
And we've had, um, some really great discussions about how to really, when we say all students, reach, you know, every end to also accelerated learners and continuing with our tiered instruction and continuing to further define some practices that we already have in place, like what I need and what I need might be different. It's a scheduled block of time, it might be different for any individual student, but that we're really looking and expecting that differentiation, um, to happen. So that has been a focus of, uh, some of our conversations at the school council. And, excuse me, and, um, continuing throughout this year and into next year, we have a lot of new technology that is, is really exciting. Everywhere I go, my Surface Pro is just, everyone comments on it, it's fantastic. Um, but, yeah, the teachers have really embraced, um, the new technology and we had a discussion, um, just today at one of our meetings as to how can we have substitutes, perhaps utilize technology, so if they have a technology-based lesson, how can they continue with that? Um, the superintendent and I were, were in a room today of a teacher that's here with us, um, Giovanna Foster, one of our integrated preschool teachers who even had, um, an app and an interactive lesson for indoor recess today. So it's nice to see that, um, technology is being utilized, but we also, you know, it's also very new to us and we want to keep that professional development going. Um, and so we're really looking at the training and sharing of what teachers have found, have been working for them with all the new iPads and Chromebooks and Kindles and everything. It's just, it's just been so exciting this year. So we want to be really purposeful in our planning, um, going ahead, that we're continuing to provide that professional development to the teachers, um, and helping them integrate that into their curriculum.
And one of our, um, areas of focus has been on assistive technology for all learners. Barbara D. has contracted with a professional development specialist in regards to, um, assistive technology. And she joins us on a monthly basis for consultation, for modeling of lessons, for a variety of things, professional development, um, that's small group-based during the school day, um, based at our, each of our grade levels for whole professional development for staff meeting time, et cetera. And it's been terrific. I just, um, was in a first grade classroom today, Chrissy Platts, um, and she, and our technology integrator, um, had the B-bots up and running. And the students have had a number of lessons in utilizing the B-bots, which is the beginning of robotics. And, um, it, it was wonderful to see both teachers instructing and then facilitating small groups as they were working with the B-bots. And, and Gail also had a group of, of students working on the iPads with the B-bot app. And it, it's just amazing to see what they're, how they're able to navigate and to see the development of the critical thinking skills. You can almost see their wheels turning, um, as, as they're working and, and interacting with one another. It's quite exciting. So that's wrap. That's our plan.
Questions, comments from the committee? Ms. McCarthy?
So I have just two questions. So, um, technology, things are going well. Do you feel like you have enough staff in there?
Technology staff?
In the, um, in the, um, computer?
Yeah, a full-time technology integrator. And she's doing a great job. Um, at the beginning of the year, she assumed way too much responsibility, uh, in terms of the dissemination and, and all that the vendors were required to do and so forth, because she just wanted to get it out there. Um, and she's doing a great job, meeting with teachers in small groups, one-on-one, depending on what their needs are. Um, she co-teaches, she models after modeling, then the teachers can take, take the lessons over. She works, uh, in collaboration with our library media specialists.
So you don't think that, um, any more staff is needed in there?
Well, uh, last year, um, Gail Ramsey, the tech integrator, was across three schools, the Brown, the Breznerhand, and the Mullen. Um, so just traveling alone and just the proximity and, and all the minutia of trying to get to three schools certainly took away from the time that we had her. So for me, it feels like such an increase to have just a full-time person in one school. Um, you know, of course, we could always use more, but we understand constraints of budget and other requests. Um, but it's been nice to have one steady person that we're able to access throughout the day and that the teachers know where to find throughout the day and it doesn't have offices at three different schools.
And she knows our staff so well and she knows our curriculum. And, um, she's always researching, she's always collaborating, she works far beyond the school day, um, to support teachers and students.
Yeah, that I can't find, um, just with, and maybe it was reflective of early on, but there were concerns that there could be, there would be a benefit, um, but there was a heightened frustration level among the kids and questions of whether that was adequately staffed.
Right, it, the beginning of the year was such a challenge. The technology, um, took quite some time to, um, distribute throughout the building and to get up and running. That was not a reflection on our technology integrator.
And we also had a lot of challenges in the beginning of the year with our technology being up and running, with our electrical being up and running. So I think all of that impacted. But from my perspective, we have a, a technology integrator at Breznerhand. We have a technology integrator right now who is shared between Mullen and NOC. And we really don't have a person who's identified at the high school level. If I had a technology integrator for every building, I would be a very happy superintendent. So.
The only other thing is, and I know we talked about this at another meeting, um, some of the after-school opportunities, I think we talked a little bit about a late bus at the Breznerhand. Um, I know specifically you worked with one of the parents. Um, I just, I still go back to, I, 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 you know, I'll use that parent as a reference. Um, what was set up didn't work out. Um, she's scrambling, um, trying to work it out, trying to work with her employer. And I just have to think that she represents more than just herself, that there's got to be people out there that are pulling their hair out, struggling with this, my child's being recommended for this, this extra support and help, um, but it's an act of Congress on, on the home front. Um, and I think, you know, I don't know if like a survey would be the answer, or maybe she does just represent herself, but it seems like I'm hearing about it more and more. And, um, I think if we really want to offer this, we have to offer a mechanism, you know, I mean, at one point even I said, I'm not sure it's worth it. I mean, what I wa- watched her go through, I'm like, but how bad does she need it? Um, so I just be mindful that, um, I think the day is coming when the Breznerhand's going to need a late bus if we want to expand these, what, uh, these WIN opportunities or whatever. Um, I don't, you know, I think when parents contact you, they want to be part of the solution, so they throw out ideas and then we kind of piecemeal it. But I think that the frustration level at home of trying to get their kids to be able to participate is bigger than, you know, maybe they're expressing to you or so, so...
Yeah, 'cause I didn't realize, she hasn't expressed to me that this, the solution isn't working, so I was, uh...
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, um, it is what it is. But I would encourage, you know, I, I love the program, I'm familiar with the WIN program, but if we don't have transportation, um, for kids, uh, especially working parents, uh, we're not really reaching, or, or maybe the ones we want to reach the most, I don't know, but...
Mr. Lukin?
So first I would just like to thank the council, I appreciate the work that you guys have been doing. And I think having the, the parent and the teacher input is really important, so thank you for putting the plan together and for meeting. Um, I, I was just wondering if, um, you know, in terms of thinking about the, the improvement plan as a whole, there are a lot of things, and I think a lot of very important things that are captured in the plan, but was there, was there any discussion or consensus reached among the council in terms of, you know, one or two things that are, that you feel are especially important in terms of driving improvement in the, the Breznerhand School that, that, you know, we'd benefit from really diving deep on?
Yeah, I think, um, a lot of our discussions, and please jump in, um, the homework was definitely, um, a topic that came up amongst both the teachers and the parents. Um, and something that we spoke with them, with the superintendent about, and, um, both Christina and I felt was very important to pursue. Um, and also just differentiated learning was a very large topic, um, as well. So I feel like those were, um, two areas that really came up upon our, came from our conversations. Some of the other things in the plan, you know, are aligned with things that we're doing in the district, like the teacher evaluation system, so how are we going to keep that going, or how are we going to keep the new curriculum going? Um, we had a lot of conversation amongst the whole council too about communication, and that's where we thought, like, more ongoing communication about the curriculum. So I really felt like this was a very, um, very active and contributing council this year.
I also just wanted to point out, when Amy mentioned the differentiation, the differentiation across the spectrum of all learners. Because when we talk about differentiation, we often talk about the children that need additional support and that, that struggle, that, that have challenges. And I think we need to focus on, a greater focus on the children that are moving forward, um, at a more accelerated rate.
Mr. Mann?
Yeah, I, uh, before I ask, I have a couple of questions. I, I did want to say that I appreciate Amy's encouraging the council to sort of chip in if you have anything you'd like to say, and I, I would be happy to hear if the council has anything they want to add to it, so, conversation. Um, I, my question is, um, in, in terms of, um, this is a two-year plan, and in terms of the implementation and analysis of, um, we talked about implementing new programs on page two. Um, the column that has the implementation and analysis enlists out all of the data that you're going to be using. I don't want to digress, but it would be very helpful for me to get an understanding of how, what's the frequency with which that data becomes available? Is this, is some of it annual, is some of it bi-weekly? Just, just to sort of w- walk down that list so I get a sense of how, how you were using the data and how fresh and how it's rolling over in the process.
Um, I, I could start with pre-KK, we could go on up.
Okay, yeah.
Um, okay, so, well, there's so much, there's a variety of data that we use. So some of it, um, is set in terms of when we do, um, interim common assessments. So, for example, at preschool, um, we will give, um, a math common assessment and a foundational common assessment and, um, you know, prerequisite skills, and they give that at the beginning of the year, middle of the year, or the end of the year. Um, we actually start with, um, some of our initial assessment data before they even come to our programs with the screening that we do in June. We look at that data, we try to, um, look further if we feel like there is a child that, um, we need additional support. We may have a related service provider, look at a child before they even enter our preschool or kindergarten program. We have the DIBELS data, which, um, is a literacy assessment, um, it's letter identification, it's phonics, um, it's being able to read basic words, um, it's a timed test to see how automatic, um, students are able to be, and that is given at three times during the year. The MKEA this year was a mandate that we have to give upon entering kindergarten, although the preschool teachers also did it so that we had some continuity. And we also have to give it at the end of the year. And then some of the, um, you know, more common or more frequent data, um, are better aligned with some of the programs that we have, so there might be end-of-unit assessments and things like that. And we look at it in a variety of ways. Some of the, um, assessments we'll look at overall, um, like when the larger, like mid-year, beginning of the year, end of the year assessments come out, we'll talk about those at staff meetings and some of the other, um, formative assessments or common interim assessments the teachers will work with, particularly the STEM coordinator and the ELA coordinator to discuss it. And then this year, because we've had a lot of different initiatives, um, the kindergarten team in particular has been meeting, um, in a study group every Thursday afternoon, um, looking at data and sort of previewing, um, lessons to come ahead because it's a lot of new, um, initiatives this year that we're trying to really be thoughtful in terms of how we're deploying it and how well the students are doing and how, you know, for pacing, how quickly to go. So it's a lot of different things. And then I guess the answer is we analyze it in many different ways. Sometimes it's more formal, sometimes it's informal, sometimes it's individualized.
That's very useful. And I, and I, the, the other question that I had was the, um, the formation of the, um, STEM committee that you're, you're, you intend to do. I, have you had any thought to, um, inviting members of the community who are involved in sciences to participate in that?
I think we're just at the initial thinking that we would like a steering committee. It's sort of a, a goal that we have for, to begin next year, so I don't think that we've done that level of brainstorming as of yet, but Christina?
And, and I, I envision, do you want to go? No, go ahead. I envision working, as I said earlier, with Dr. Kinsley, um, also with Angela Bick. Um, and, you know, we're not going to be working in isolation at the Breznerhand School when, when you talk about science, that there's going to be a larger district focus on science as well. And we're just one component of the larger picture of, um, moving forward from a district perspective. Do you want to add to that, Angela?
Yeah, no, that's really accurate. And I, I think the other thing is, um, Bruce, we've already had some community people, members come forward that are really excited about, um, the focus next year around science and, um, have asked to participate in some of that. So when we further develop the steering committee, we will certainly open that up, but we've already considered... So when we further develop the steering committee, we will certainly open that up, but we've already considered that.
I was, I was hoping to hear, but I wanted to hear it suggested.
Some of those interested parties are directly from the EBC, which is kind of this.
Mm-hmm, they are.
Already have partnerships.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Decanter.
Uh, uh, first of all, thank you for a very thoughtful plan. Given that we're moving forward on this plan and have, are, some of the time has already gone by. I guess I always say, okay, um, as we look at these SMART goals, we look at the metrics piece of it. Uh, how do you feel? Have you, have you accomplished what you've set out to do so far? What are your, how do you know that you've accomplished? And what are some of the, the things you've achieved? We've heard a lot about what you're planning to do and what you're working on and what you're meeting about. But I'd like to hear some of the results, some of the, the, although they may be early and they may be anecdotal, what some of the successes are in your, in your programming of this plan.
I can begin with the implementation of the curriculum in terms of the implementation of Engage New York, the implementation of the phonics, the professional development that's been in place for both of those programs. Um, additionally, we've launched the website. The website needs ongoing work and revisions and updates, but it is launched. And we, Amy and I, um, and Karina, our assistant principal, we're hoping to sit down last week and review the website together. But we weren't, we weren't able to get there. But I did a careful review of it myself. I know Amy and Karina have done the same, and there are areas that we would like to streamline, perfect, improve, enhance. I need to pull up the plan, and I'm just speaking off the top of my head in terms of our successes. The, um, DDMS were developed last year. We're in the, we're implementing the DDMS this year. We'll be analyzing the DDMS at the end of the year. So we're making some nice progress there.
We, we presented, um, back in June, some of the accomplishments, um, to the school committee.
That's right.
And obviously those have continued. So I guess just reviewing that, looking at some things that we want to accomplish in fourteen sixteen, um, was trying out some model curriculum units at, um, more grade levels. Implementing the new phonics and math program. Researching, um, how a lot of these new mandates come together, whether it be the teacher evaluation system with the MKEA, with NAUIC. That discussion is ongoing. And I, I think, I think we'd be remiss if we didn't say that we've accomplished opening a new school. Establishing, you know, like, things like a school mascot and things that, that children can really, you know, buy into and establishing our traditions. And, um, Christina and I have worked really hard to learn, you know, how to do shared leadership and using Google Docs and changing a lot of the ways that we've done things so that, so that things can be done in real time and be fluid between Karina, Karina Massey, the assistant principal, Christina and I. And I think that that's all been, um, it's been a really, I can't think of a year that I've accomplished more. It's just been, um, it's been a little bit of a whirlwind, uh, but it's been great too. It's, it's so exciting to be in the new school. But I, I guess I would just refer back to what we presented in June. And I think that we've hit just about every single one of these things, which maybe I should hold back on a few so that we can save them for next year.
Any further questions, comments? Mr. Cole.
Thank you. Uh, first I want to echo, uh, the comments of, um, fellow committee members here about the effort. And I want to say thanks for the effort to the council for putting this together. There's one thing that strikes me though, straight ahead, uh, and that's what's gonna be needed to, uh, fund or sustain this improvement plan. And, uh, I say that because when I look through and I see words like new, training, create, expand, provide, that usually translates to dollars. And, uh, as we get close to the budget time, I think it'll be important to determine that. And I guess perhaps if I can refer to one item under curriculum, uh, under, uh, benchmark three, where you know, uh, budgetary planning for new science materials. Maybe if you could talk about that process a little bit, that might help.
We're actually doing that as a district rather than each school in isolation. And do you want to speak a little bit further to that, Angela? Because I know that we're not budgeting for the science materials at each of our sites.
Right.
And there's also going to be an implementation phase.
Yes, what, what we're working to do is we're working to build, um, a three-year implementation plan around aligning to the next generation science standards and the resources that will be need, needed. We actually started the work, a lot of this work this year at the middle school level. And we were able to fund, um, a portion of the resources needed to support the work at the middle school level. Their curriculum is now aligned to the next generation. And next year, our next phase will be to complete that process at the middle school level, which will provide stronger feeder for the high school and the work that's going on at the high school. And then we will be doing the alignment work at our elementary next year and then going through a selection process of resources much like we did at the middle school this year and budgeting forward over the next couple of years for the rollout of that at the elementary. And during that time, we'll work with the high school as well, um, making sure that the high school is able to be cognizant of the work that's going on leading to the high school. The high school won't adopt next generation science standards for several years yet until the high-stake test, uh, determination is made around the next generation science standards. So the high school will continue to use the current Massachusetts, um, science standards until testing decisions are made at the high school level. So, um, and then after that, then we'll focus on the high school once all of those decisions are done too. So, uh, and.
So, so, I mean, and I'm not trying to, uh, I'm not trying to, we are not trying to over, overly think this, but. So why is that, that text there? Why is budgetary planning for new science materials in the school improvement plan if it's not relevant?
I think it is relevant because we're, we're doing it as a district. So every school should have it in their plan at someplace because, um, it's a holder as a reminder that that's part of the improvement that's going to be going on. But you'll probably see most of the dollars, um, in the curriculum budget. Because those decisions will be made collaboratively, but where it's a new district implementation, we'll carry it in the curriculum budget, district-wide.
All right.
Angela, I would just add that, you know, like with any implementation, um, sometimes there are consumable materials and things that eventually will become more, um, supplies and things that the schools will, will order on an annual basis. And so we'll have to look at that from a budget perspective as, you know, will more money go to those science supplies and materials that are consumable from, from year to year or, you know?
Similar to the Engage New York.
Yeah, similar to the Engage New York.
Excellent point.
You know, we needed all sorts of things for the Engage New York, like socks for the kids and gloves to put counters on. And, you know, we shared the cost of that, and those things do become consumable things as the years go on.
So when, when, when do you, when do you effectively start to rough that out? Because I guess, you know, as a school committee member, uh, you know, I see this as our plan and I very much want it to succeed. And as we approach budget time, I think it's gonna be helpful to know what some of these, uh, improvements are gonna cost, so.
I'm thinking that those details will be worked out next year.
For science.
For science.
But I think you'll see some of the, um, budgetary information at the school level around the math resources after the first year implementation. So I think those will show up this year. I think you see those in those budgets.
Okay.
Anyone else? Do the parents or the community rep on the committee, would you like to contribute in any way? How you felt you were involved in this process, um?
I'd just like to say, um, I've been the community rep for a while. I've started off as a parent rep and I've just kind of stuck around, which has been great. But this year has been, you know, you've got two school communities coming together. And for a school council, you have, uh, new parents coming in to the school. They're not quite sure what a school council is. And I think Christina and Amy have done such a great job of educating the school council. And this school council has probably been one of the most active ones that I've been part of, one of the most vocal ones too. So I think they've done a really good job, so they should really, um.
So you feel you have a real voice in this process?
Yeah, I think I do. And I think it's been really managed well, and it's working well between the different communities and the schools, so.
It's good to hear.
It's good.
You do.
What did you say?
No, I would just like to point out that when I read the school improvement plan from last year, it was important to me to see if anything was actually accomplished, like you brought up. And all of the goals that were on the, could, were accomplished this year by Christina and Amy. So I think that that's important to note. And I also am excited about the work we're gonna do with the senior center. Having two young boys, I think it's extremely important to get them involved with the senior center being on the same campus essentially. And, I mean, when they're playing on the basketball court, the senior center's right there. So I think that being in the improvement plan is gonna be very exciting moving forward.
It's a great connection. Um, and can I just ask one question? How is your student reporting system keeping up with all these changes? Like report cards, stu- progress reports, whatever? I'm just curious, because I know that, um, and I don't know a lot, but I do know that there was a, either a pilot or an, or a new. So I guess I, and I didn't hear anything about that in here, so.
Great question. We worked on the re- on revising our progress report, a total revision, um, so that it is a standards-based progress report. It's aligned to the standards. And it was a joint effort, uh, between grades one through five. So the upper elementary and the, and, well, I'm calling ourselves upper elementary. The eleme- our elementary school and the upper elementary worked collaboratively together, which was wonderful. We participated in some professional development together. And then, um, we branched out and we worked respectively with our own staffs. Then Amy thought, we need to jump on this bandwagon also. And at first, she was a little bit hesitant about jumping on it right away because the pre-K K had so much on their plates with MKEA and, and everything else. But within a moment's notice, Amy was on board. And so now the K through five progress reports have been revised. Right now, so we've had a full year of implementation, that was last year. We're implementing again this year. But as we implement this year, we're taking note at each trimester and are addressing any concerns that teachers may have or feedback that parents may have been providing. And then we'll tweak the progress report if need be. So teachers have already been engaging in reflective conversations along the way so that they don't lose sight of what they were thinking about at the end of the first trimester as we enter now the end of the second trimester and then again.
It's a good question, but it was a good answer too.
I just wanted to add that, um, to really capitalize on what you said, Christina, that where our progress reports are really about the standards. We can have new programs and we can have new methodology, but we're still beholden to the standards. And we had actually shifted that when we started to shift our preschool programming. You may recall, we were more multi-age. And then we delineated between what does a first year in preschool look like and what does a second year look like because the common core included the pre-kindergarten year. So we had done some work for several years. And, um, pre-K K is still on a twice-a-year, bi-annual reporting system. And we have talked about aligning perhaps to a trimester. But that makes my staff very anxious because of all the initiatives that are on their plate. So, you know, as we continue to grow to be one school, you know, we're looking at further tweaking that. But I would say, you know, learning new programs or learning new lessons or planning new lessons has been more of the challenge than the report card has always been, you know, how the students are doing against the standard.
But I, you know, I knew you were piloting and I just didn't know what the feedback or the input was or what your, you, you know, your plan was for this year, because you are one school now, so. Sounds like you're jumping on board, which is nice. Any, anything else? I also want to thank you for doing such a wonderful job. This was a, this was a great school improvement plan. And, um, we wish you luck and thank the parents and community members for serving. And, you know, as Mr. Cole was mentioning, um, uh, when the superintendent presents us with your budget, that, that will be the time when we can, you know, invest in all of this. So I hope priorities are being worked on and, you know, things you really need. Because, um, y- y- you know, just consumable materials at your, your, your grade levels can be astronomical from buying, you know, macaroni to the gloves you spoke about for science, so.
We certainly will invest. We're hopeful about that.
So, yeah, I know. So thank you so much for this. It was wonderful to see all of you and thanks for your hard work. Next on our agenda is the high school improvement plan. So I'd like to invite, um, Mr. Parent, the principal, and any accompanying members, which you know I love to see this, the people.
I brought people.
Bring the people.
I brought your people.
Bring your people.
Does everybody have a copy of the?
Yes, they do.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I have, uh, four members of, of my council. Unfortunately, our two student reps, both junior, um, young ladies who, uh, contributed greatly to our, our process are, uh, taking SAT prep classes. And so they're unavailable to, to, to meet with us, um, uh, in the evening. They've missed the last, I think, the last, the last meeting. And Kathy Horton, who's our community member, is, um, in Florida enjoying, um, the climate down there.
Lucky her.
As opposed to, yes, as opposed to what we've been dealing with.
We could go there for this presentation.
We do have Tina Cochran, a teacher here, Sheila King, who's a, a teacher, Nina Carey, a parent, and Ralph Orlando, a parent, who have been, uh, a part of this, uh, conversation, collaborative conversation about developing, um, this school improvement plan. Just to take you through some of the, uh, the highlights here, um, you know, I, I start, I'll start with resources because that's really where we spent probably the, the bulk of our conversation at, at the beginning, middle, and the end of this whole process. We talked about, um, a couple of key areas as far as, um, uh, resources are concerned. And that is, um, increasing staffing at the high school, um, both teaching, nursing, counseling, um, staff, both for next year and the year after. And breaking it down a little bit for you as to some of the course offerings that we'd be looking to do. Right now, my students are in the process of selecting their elective classes. We have inputted all of the incoming ninth-grade elective, uh, classes for them, and students are now online doing their thing. We will, starting next week, grab students who have not finished or completed it, um, in the way that they were supposed to because depending on what grade level you choose, maybe four electives, three electives, or two electives, depending on what grade level you are, so that it, that gives you options in case your, your elective, um, opportunities don't fit, um, you know, the master schedule that, um, you've chosen for your core classes. But we are offering right now, um, uh, business classes to students, um, accounting one, accounting two, marketing, entrepreneurship, and an intro to business class. We're also offering students AP chemistry. And, um, time will tell in the next two weeks when we really take the numbers that, of the students who have signed up and really start to develop where, where are we going to need increases in staff based on what the students tell us from the courses that they've signed up for.
It's unlikely that all of those will fly, but we hope some of them will definitely fly. So, because we need, we need the electives and we want to be, we want to be venturing out. And we want to get business back. We'd really like to explore the AP. So we're, we're hopeful that, that. So we're, we're hopeful that, that we'll have a lot of student interest in those areas.
The NEAS report and the state standards as far as the DESC has driven my, my request for a, a point-five nurse. I have seven hundred and eighty-five students with one nurse, and it's, 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 it's almost, it's virtually impossible to deal with that number of students with, with one person in, 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 in that office. You know, I'd like to build on that over the next couple of years to bring it up to a, to a one-oh, but, um, you know, the recommendation was to add a half, and that's what we're asking for to start, but again, I'd like to see that grow. The counselor, um, with the change in our schedule for next year, I, I will know in a couple of weeks, but I'm assuming that the number of students, um, um, moving into internships will increase with our schedule that doesn't rotate like it currently does. It's going to give our students more opportunities to either come to school after first period or leave at the end of the, of the day to go out and do those, what, what I consider to be rigorous, uh, internships. You know, when you were talking about a senior center going in down the street, um, I can see where that may parlay into some of our students doing some internship, not only community service, uh, there, but also some internship possibilities, uh, there. And by having a seventy-three-minute period, it's going to, it's going to give our students those options that we currently don't have. That means that the, uh, guidance counselor that, uh, I kind of stole away from internships when our numbers decreased, um, I need to put back there. And really, um, I also need a director of guidance. I think the one thing, you know, that, that, um, I probably should have jumped on several years ago, um, but it just, because of all of the turmoil budgetary-wise and the changing of the administrative rules, we really haven't made a lot of connections with, with the colleges that I'd like to see us make. I'd, I'd like to see my, my, uh, guidance director go out and make those, uh, uh, connections with, um, some of the colleges that we just haven't had that opportunity to do that, and I think that would, that would really, um, uh, give us and give our kids more of an opportunity by making those connections, uh, between our high school and, and, and some of those schools that our students apply to and don't normally get in. And, and so that's the type of bridge I'd like to see us start making in, in, in that particular area. The other thing is we're looking at, at, at technology, you know, when they're talking about having, uh, uh, technology integrators at the other, other schools, we do not have one. I think, and, and, you know, Ralph's been championing this, um, um, you know, for the entire year. To perform a technology needs assessment at the high school, I think, is, is the first step in doing that. And then, based on what we gather as far as what the needs are, and what, uh, through this assessment, through this survey, a- and where we want to go as a school, I think that's going to drive what our technology needs are going to be in the future. We have some wonderful technology things going on in the school, but it's being done in pockets of the school. And we, we need to bring that together in some cohesive way. We are very excited about the athletic fields, um, you know, we just had a meeting with Gale Associates, uh, over vacation, um, about the, the field in the back, the football field, uh, which is also going to be lacrosse, soccer, and field hockey, uh, having that completed, um, by the first of, of September. We're excited about also about, you know, the, the, uh, future baseball field, and also the redoing of, of, of our track down at Fuller Field, and the, uh, interior of that track being a, a, a field that we can utilize, um, as far as our, uh, athletic teams. So we welcome, uh, the opportunity to work collaboratively with the city in, in working to develop these fields. And finally, the fourth area un- under, under resources is school safety. You know, I've talked about this, uh, for a couple of years, um, you know, um, we, we need some safe, safety improvements here at the high school to, to meet the, um, unfortunately, to meet the, um, the situation in the world in, in the, um, you know, two thousand and fifteen. You know, we had an event, uh, at the beginning of the school year. I think it was handled well, um, but, you know, there are things, uh, in this building that I think, um, a- as a high school, I think there are things that we need. I, I, I know it's, it's a, it's a big-ticket item, you know, and talking to Steve Burgholm, you know, roughly on either side of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. You know, I, I would hope that we could aggressively pursue, uh, you know, any grants that might be out there, out there to help to offset some of the potential costs as far as safety. And I, I listed some of the things that we have talked about as a council, things that would be needed in order to improve the, um, uh, safety component here, um, at the high school. The other, uh, key area that we, we talked a lot about o- over this past year has been curriculum and instruction. Some of the benchmarks that, that you see on the school improvement plan were taken directly from the NEAS report. So benchmark number one under curriculum and instruction comes directly from the NEAS report. You know, we're looking for, um, you know, to have those, uh, uh, twenty-first century learning expectations embedded into our, into our curriculum maps. We're looking to offer more, uh, dual enrollment opportunities for our students. I think with the new schedule, it's going to allow, um, college professors to come into our building and team teach STEM courses with our science teachers. I, I see that as, as, uh, on the horizon of happening. We implemented an advisor-advisee program, we started in, in, in January, we're continuing. Um, I'm right now a, a junior, um, advisor, I'm, I'm subbing for a, a teacher who's on maternity leave. So I have a, I have a group of juniors that, that I meet with in the advisory. You know, I, I make the correlation in, in my career, uh, as being a, an advisor as to being a coach. Just getting to know that student on a different level than you would know them in the classroom or as an administrator, I think, is really an important thing. And providing that student with that stability as a freshman coming in and having that same advisor and that same advisory for four years, I think really, um, i- is going to set a nice tone, um, in the building. The other thing that I'll be looking for, and it's in, it's in my current school budget, is money for, to complete the advisor-advisee program, uh, for next year, because we want it to be a full-year program. We started it as a half-year this year. And then, um, for, for, uh, teachers to work over the summer on developing a, a, a senior project that would be implemented for next year. So I've put that money in my budget, hoping that, you know, if, if it's there, I want it to be utilized by a, a, a group of teachers to come together, like they did for the advisor-advisee, uh, to bring together a, 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 uh, senior project that works for our school. There's all kinds of different ways that you can do a senior project. What the key component is, is that you have, you have to create something that fits and meets the needs of your individual school. And it's the same thing for an advisor-advisee. There are hundreds of different advisor-advisee programs throughout the country. You've got to, you've got to determine what your school and what your student and staff needs are to develop those programs. We're talking about, um, you know, credit recovery programs, starting in the following summer. We're looking for, um, some team talk classes. I'm looking to, you know, AP chemistry this year, adding AP psychology next year. What I'm, what I'm excited about as far as AP psychology is, it's very similar to AP environmental science. You, you reach a different level of students in those two classes, and you actually increase the number of students who, who are taking AP classes. Whereas AP chemistry, um, that, that's going to be a class that you're going to have students who are going to take multiple AP classes at, you know, in that particular subject, along with maybe a math and something else. AP psychology, you're going, you're going to grab a whole group of students who are not, n- currently not AP students, who are going to take AP psychology, uh, in their junior or senior year. And we're going to spread those numbers out exponentially over the next couple of years. You know, again, um, the third, the second bullet here, um, to modify, uh, existing curriculum maps, to revise our school-wide rubrics, that was a recommendation from the NEAS, uh, committee, and to continue to work with our, our, our newly instituted DDMs and to, and to start gathering that data and seeing what the student growth data is showing us. And this is really in its infancy this year, it's the first year that we're kind of wrestling with it, uh, and we'll be wrestling with it through our evaluation process, but it's, it's something that, you know, we need to start analyzing these numbers to see what are these numbers telling us as far as, uh, student growth. We've always reported out on student performance. We're, we're looking at now is student growth, and that's a whole mindset change for us, not only for staff, but also for evaluators in, in looking at, you know, what does student growth really mean? And so that, that's really, uh, um, a, a, a key component of a change that we need to adapt to over the next couple of years. It's not going to be easy, and it's not going to happen in one year. We've got to give everybody time to, to adapt to, to what we're doing here. The third, uh, major component of our school improvement plan, uh, comes under, you know, school culture. I heard DeBresnahan saying professional, we, we went with a school culture. To develop and implement a process to communicate individual and school-wide achievement, that comes directly off of the NEAS report. We're hoping that the new website is something that we can, uh, utilize, um, to, to, uh, improve communication out to the community and to parents and to students, and that we will be reporting out growth data by department and or by grade as we move forward, as we analyze the, uh, uh, growth data that will be coming in, in the first year of, of the implementation of the DDMs. The second area here is, uh, concerns the, you know, the advisor-advisee program. We also, uh, look to utilize, uh, the newer technologies that might be out there, uh, the flipped classroom, uh, model that some of my teachers are, are, are already, um, kind of tinkering with. And, uh, a couple of my science teachers have posted labs online that the students go to, or a demonstration, and, and that's their homework assignment, is to watch that online through their Moodle account, and then to come back and, 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 you know, talk about what they saw, you know, and, and so those are the types of things I think we need to move as a school, but we need, we need to do it, um, wi- with some caution. But we also, I think this goes hands in hand in, with our technology assessment, to see where do we want to go as a school as far as our technology needs. And again, we, we really want to see the advisor-advisee program strengthened throughout a, throughout the school year, and we foresee, um, you know, internship opportunities. We, we have offered students, uh, throughout the school year, restorative just- justice options beyond, um, athletics, where it was first implemented in, in the high school. The parents on the committee were really interested in looking at, n- not only having an advisor-advisee program, but, but doing a peer mentoring within the advisor-advisee, so that seniors have some mentoring with freshmen. And so that's an idea we'd like to, to, to explore as, as we, again, as we adapt our advisor-advisee program over the next couple, couple of years. And, you know, we work very, very closely with the Newburyport Youth Services on a variety of different things, but one of the key components is looking, what does the youth risk behavior survey tell us? And how as a school and how as a agency for the city, can we pinpoint certain things that the students are telling us that we can focus on? And we've done that very, very well with them over the last three or four years, and, and that partnership, I think, um, is very, very strong, and I, and, and I'd still like to grow that even more. And then the last piece, um, is scheduling. And really, the, the key component here is, is, is something that doesn't necessarily cost a lot of money, and that's time. But giving teachers time to collaborate, time to analyze, uh, time to engage in professional discourse, I think, is, it's, it's really important to find that time, and that's where our early release days come in, with vertical alignment meetings with, with the members of, of, of the ascending schools that, that come to us. You know, looking at establishing an interdisciplinary faculty learning community to explore educational options that we don't currently, uh, offer. In one of the, uh, previous, um, categories, we talked about, you know, contemporary journalism class a- as an example of something that might be taught in the future, where you have teachers from different departments getting together. Analyzing this, the current school year and, and school day schedules, um, as, as you know, I presented to you a, a while ago the, uh, daily schedule that we will be going to next year, we've rolled it out to the students, um, in the last six weeks. We got very favorable, um, um, reception from them. You know, the conversations that DeBresnahan is having about homework is something that we have wrestled with as a faculty, as a school. It was one of the first things that was brought to us by the students when we changed our schedule five years ago. Um, I think our new schedule allows us to focus in on that without having to come up with, like, some, if you look at some schools, they have a homework policy. Well, teachers in, in periods, uh, A, C, and E can give homework on these days, and B, D, and F can give homework on these days. And really what that does, in my view, is handcuff the staff as far as how they're going to get through the curriculum. I think by going from six classes per day to five, w- we're going to address that in some way. That doesn't mean that the conversation stops, because it may not be a solve every problem, but I think it's going to go a long way in helping, and that's one of the things we talk to students about. And, and we got a lot of this in the audience when we were, when we were going over the schedule. One of the reasons why, when we looked at our YRBS survey and looked at, you know, student stress, and what students were being stressed out the most, and, and how can we, in some way, help meet their needs better than what we're currently doing? Flex scheduling, um, I, I'm a, a strong proponent of that, uh, the NECO courses. Uh, we had a good turnout of, of sophomore parents, uh, earlier in the school year. We, uh, have tested every student that took the, uh, uh, test over at Northern Essex, uh, passed. That means they can all take college cla- classes for college credit starting next year, uh, which was a nice, uh, compliment to the, uh, English teachers. But we're, we were looking to expla- expand the flex schedule, and I, I, I'll just give you a little s- a, a side story here. I had a teacher come to me in a science, uh, department and say, "I, I want to teach my class at night." And I, you know, that, that's, that's a difficult thing to do, because you're really extending your, your, your workday from seven-thirty to, you know, two-thirty and whatever else you do, to seven-thirty to nine o'clock a couple nights a week. And I said, "Well, well, well, why?" "Well, I'm teaching astronomy next year, and sitting up in, in our, in our, in our science lab is, is a telescope that has been sitting there for years, not being utilized. And if I have the course at night, I can use the telescope." So kids are really going to get some hands-on astronomy, as opposed to just, you know, things that they're, that they would do out of books and everything else. So, you know, I jumped all over and said, "Oh, yeah, we're going to offer that at night." And so we're offering astronomy as, as, as a flex schedule, um, of course, next year. I'd like to continue to work with that and continue to see, um, offerings for students beyond our normal school day. And it doesn't always have to be at night. We've talked in great detail, uh, uh, parents and teachers of, you know, the doors open at seven-thirty and they close at two-thirty. Well, why? Why can't we have some classes that are even in, in the afternoon for students who may not be involved in athletics? And, and, and offering those things to students. You know, one of the things, when the Brown School Committee came to meet with me and said, you know, "What can we use the Brown School for?" I said, "What a great place to have, you know, offerings of Salem State, Northern Essex, or, you know, U Lowell to come in and utilize part of that building a- as a campus where we could have classes for students either during the school day, at the, or at the end of the school day, or in the afternoon, or, or in the evening, or over the summer." Because we've, we talked throughout this school improvement plan about offering our students both, uh, credit recovery plan, uh, opportunities in the summer, but also some curriculum enhancement that might, might be done over the summer. Students in, in New Hampshire can apply to go to St. Paul's School in the summertime and take some wonderful, uh, courses taught by, uh, great high school and college teachers. And I'd like to see that regionally developed in this area. I think some of the work we've done with, um, Pettucket, Amesbury, Triton, ourselves, Central Catholic now is involved in our consortium at NECO, um, Methuen, and a few other schools, we might be able to, to create something regionally over the summer that I'd like to see offered to, to our students. Those have been the conversations that we've had, you know, as a group, going back to the beginning of the school year. And, um, I think we've worked well, uh, we've worked very collaboratively. This is, to me, a plan that was produced not by one person, but was produced by a team. Everybody had equal say, um, we all listened to each other. And, um, I think we have a very viable school improvement plan for the next two years.
Questions, comments?
And I would please ask my members to to chime in anytime they want.
Mr. DeCantor.
I want to congratulate the people who put this together. In my years sitting on the school committee, I'd say this is probably one of the most exciting, most ambition, ambitious and most aggressive school improvement plans I've seen. I think it is very good to see the key learnings from the NIESC experience front and center. It shows that the high school is growing up and growing into the twenty-first century in so many fronts. You should be very, very proud of this. This is exciting stuff and if we achieve ninety-three point seven percent of it, that's a standard I'll hold you to.
I'll be very happy.
Very happy. Congratulations on this.
Thank you.
I think, however, as as we look to it, we're what what I, I would like to see more of, and I think we see it in some of the details in here, is taking this from, if you let's take flight to, let's make sure we've got everything on the ground to support it. And those details are the ones which we now have to flush out. And I would ask the school council at the high school to really keep in close touch with us as you're going through the planning with the with the superintendent, particularly on the kinds of support you need from us. There are two types of resources that you need from us, we know, one is money and the other is time. So, as you take a look at that, keep us very much in the loop so that we can be supportive of these funds as much as we possibly can because this is, this is some outstanding stuff. Thank you.
Well said, Mr. DeCantor. Any other comments or questions, concerns, thoughts? Mr. Minnick?
Sure. I I echo what what Nick has said. And I think it's, I think it's a terrific plan. I think it addresses a wide range of issues with a degree of specificity and vision that are very impressive. I would, I'm really, really pleased with a great deal of of what I see here. It it does seem to be a significant step forward in a lot of ways in terms of what I've called over the years, the permeability of the classroom. That we're, we're opening the classroom up to the community, we're giving kids an opportunity to get out into the community. And that's all really strongly reflected here. When I looked at, and I I really spent some time with it and I just was more and more pleased as I went through it. I'm I'm encouraged under school culture that you're gonna do a school culture survey. And I really think that that's a, that's gonna give you some key information. It's been, there's been some bumps in the road this year in terms of of culture. And I would really encourage, you know, a gathering of information and then a real good, hard look at how we can address some of the challenges that we've had. I, you know, I I have I just, I I I think the time's come to do that. I was really glad to see that survey there. And I'm really interested in in hearing back what what the kids, what the parents think. Are the areas in which the school has cultural, cultural strengths and the areas of challenge that need to be addressed. But I would, I would encourage that to be something that 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 gets addressed sooner rather than later. But I'm really, really, really pleased with how specific the plan is, how clearly targeted it is. I'm really pleased with the budgetary suggestions that have been made. It's very, very clear. I understand how everything fits together. We haven't even begun the formal budget process, but I already have a real good understanding of how everything connects at the high school level. And I would love to get that from all of the other schools as well.
Can I actually ask a question to that end? So, part of doing this, part of the struggle we had just in the last couple of months was it was trying to determine to what extent you would like that monetary figure, you know, a guesstimate. And Mike has more information than we do as as members, as opposed to not including that. I mean, you like, you asked that question earlier, it's always
I think it's vital, I think it's vital and I don't, I don't mean to comment out of line here, but and and I'll make a little joke here, as some of whom went to Newburyport High School. I've had various alumni tell me that we really know how to critically think. So, when I get two school improvement plans in front of me and one's very specific and one isn't, I gotta, you know, I'm looking at the work that was done to make it specific because it takes an effort to do that. And and, because in the end, what what we're gonna have to work with is finite.
Right.
And and so I wanna get a sense of what, you know, again, how we're gonna prioritize, how we're gonna triage, if you will, the improvements, whether they be relative to student safety, whether they be relative to the cu- culture, whether they be relative to how many staff we can add and courses we can offer. So, I mean
Even if it's something that might be in the district-wide budget, as opposed to the school's budget, you'd still like us to try that?
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, I, it it feels like we've spent a generation talking about the impact of cutting things. To be able to sit here and talk about the impact of additions and be able to see that, see that in a really tangible way, that if you give us X amount of dollars, we're gonna be able to offer accounting one, accounting two, we're gonna be able to offer this, we're gonna be able to offer that. That's, that has, that's very powerful now. That doesn't necessarily mean that we're gonna be able to fulfill all of those needs, but it holds us, I think, to a higher level of when you get a higher level of information, you have a higher level of accountability, I think, for the community. And, you know, I'm I'm glad that Mike is really pleased with all the money that we've spent to beef up our athletic opportunities for kids. We damn well better be ready to start spending that kind of money, I think, on academics as well. Because that's a considerable amount of money that we've just invested in sports across the city. So, so the time has come to see some of these numbers, to make this high school be the high school that that we really dream and know that it can be. So, I I I, you know, and 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 to to quote Dr. Orlando, I I'd love to see these numbers in October next year.
I do wanna ask a a question also of you. Some of the things that we've already started as a high school and we're continuing, we questioned whether or not we should put things as continue or some things that we just do because we're great teachers. Should we put that in there? Like, we continually, like all good teachers, work together to make our instruction better. Do you wanna see that or is that just a given, like, we're gonna do that? Like, what kinds of things do you wanna see in here? Just brand-new things or some of the great things that we're currently doing and gonna keep doing?
I'll comment on that for a minute and then go to someone else. I I I think we're always looking for collaboration among teachers. And if it becomes, you know, an issue or a difficulty that you don't have enough of that, I think we would like to know that conceptually to begin conversation. The other thing I wanna go back to what you, what you were saying before about, you know, budget and how much do we wanna know? And I I a hundred percent agree with my colleagues, but the other thing that happens here is I think Susan and the administrators have spent a lot of time developing a protocol for budget preparation. And I know the principals have been working each in their buildings on what they feel they absolutely positively need to run a great program next year. But then that all also needs to come back to the administrative council as a whole. And that's where that conversation's happening about, we have X amount of dollars, we we've gotta prioritize, you know. First of all, what is safety? I heard Mike talk about, you know, a school nurse. And for me, that seems to be a given. We knew a couple of years ago, I think, that we were gonna need to add that position at the high school. So, that wasn't a surprise to us. So, the more you can inform us of the things that you're thinking about, it may not happen right away, but it plants a seed and it and it lets all of us know what's really important for you at the building level. And then, you know, Mike takes those things and comes back to this larger group and they vet that. We are also asked as school committee members what our priorities are. And one of the ways I form mine is hearing from all of you. You know, the principals, the administrators, the school councils. So, I think it all fits together and you're not running on parallel tracks at all. It's just that it needs to get fed to the right place. And then it comes back out to us as a recommendation and as a decision from the superintendent and the council, the administrative council.
One of the, the things that I wanna just share with the group is that one of the things that the leadership team and I are working on to present to the school committee, when I present the budget this year, is that I'm not presenting just the budget that we'd like for next year. I'm also looking out two more years beyond that so that the school committee can have an idea of where we wanna go and where we wanna get to over a three-year period. I think it's important for the community and parents to know and students to know, this is what we wanna build over a three-year period. So, that's, that's gonna be a little bit different this coming year, that I'm gonna give you a larger picture than you've seen before.
Angela?
I I just wanted to add that I think this is where the school improvement plans are so important because you're telling the story to the school committee through your school improvement plan that helps them, I would hope, understand the numbers that come forward at the time of the budget. So, there should be a direct connection between the goals that the schools are setting and then those numbers that get presented. And by doing such a nice job with the school improvement plans, you really kinda told the backstory that the numbers don't tell by themselves.
Ms. McCarthy?
Mike, I just had a question about and maybe it's a communication thing, that, um, so teachers stay after one day a week, right? Is that, like, pretty set in stone?
That, that's the minimum. Contractual. Contractually, that's the minimum that they stay?
Okay. So, because the feedback I've, I've received is that it doesn't always happen, and I know things come up, I I I understand that. But there seems to be some confusion, and I've had a hard time understanding it too. And maybe it's could be on the website. I know when you go to back-to-school night, you know, the teachers will say, I generally stay after on this day, but, you know, I'm open to staying on this day and and it's a, it it appears a little loose. And I find, well, some of the feedback I've gotten mostly from freshman parents is that they, they think their kid's staying after and then their kid's at home and, oh, well, the teacher couldn't stay after, or I couldn't find the teacher. Wondering if that could be or at least look and be communicated more like it's set in stone as to when these teachers stay after, for what subject. I also think too, with the kids, and I think we talked about this one year, them remembering, you know, what teacher stays after what day. There was talk about having it on their door, which I know is extra work for the teachers and probably very cumbersome and maybe not even worth it. But if parents knew, you know, then they can say, you know, this teacher stays after today, so I'm planning on you staying after. Again, I know things happen, but on the outside, it looks, and probably the teachers will wanna shoot me, but it looks really loose, it looks inconsistent. I'm sure some teachers are better at it than others or more conscientious, but wondering if if maybe it could be on the website or communicated better. I think people put it on the papers you get on back-to-school night, but like, to be honest, after you read the papers, who really keeps them? So, I don't know, I just, I I am hearing feedback about that and I have found it confusing personally, so.
I asked each department head, and Sheila's a department head, to get a list from each member of the department as to what day that they're, that they stay after. That one contractual day. I mean, I've got teachers who are here Monday through Friday till four-thirty. I've got some teachers who hold to the contractual, I'm here that one day. I've got a lot of teachers that are in between both ends of the spectrum.
And I think the ones that say, I stay after two or three, if the students aren't showing up, I'm sure the three gets whittled down to two. Sometimes these teachers then change their day because they're taking a course and then, you know, it's not really communicated, so.
Maybe it's something we look at putting up on our website.
Right, I think that would, and and if things change in a different semester.
Outside the door, I don't think there's a lot to ask.
Yeah.
I think that that is something that kids would use.
And many classrooms, yeah, many classrooms that I go into, it's on the, it's on the whiteboard in front of the room. I I see that, I can't say in every classroom, but I see it frequently.
Yep.
You know, my after-school day is Tuesday and Wednesday.
Right. I think the parents wanna know.
Yes, I I get it.
The possibility that happens is because, in reality, it doesn't work for a student to have just that one day. So, if my extra help day is Tuesday and they have a quiz on Tuesday
Right.
and they want me to stay on Monday, I will. So, I think that's what you're hearing when teachers stay unavailable other days. It's because they want to make themselves available and they are hoping that students will ask them, will you stay on Monday? And usually the answer is yes. But I think that that idea of posting on the outside of the door is not a lot to ask. And it would be because, yes, kids don't keep that page from the beginning of the year and the website too, both those things.
Right, yeah, I mean, I, you know, I I'm, I'm sure there's, I'm sure it's organized. It just doesn't look like it on the outside and and, you know, especially as freshman parents would like to, so.
Yeah, I would con- concur with uh, with you saying, Audrey, with the freshmen. But I also think as kids get older, juniors, seniors, you know, good learning experiences for them to seek out help in a range of time. It's not always gonna be after school, maybe during the study hall, maybe before school. And, you know, I can speak for my own kids that have come through is that they'll, they'll seek, they've sought out teachers and I'd say more than ninety percent of the time have gotten to help, you know, or in a, in a planned way, mutual way, so it works. And to, just to touch on what you were saying, asking before, if you got good things going on, parade them out, parade them out.
Mr. DeCantor?
Yes, I was gonna go back to that question because I don't think we had answered your question on what you should tell us about your programmatic type of things. And I think, I would say the outliers, there's stuff that are good things because it's always good to get, certainly the school committee, but the committee, the community at large, feeling good about what's going on in the high school. So, toot your horn, absolutely. But at the other end, when you are encountering obstacles for some of the things that you'd like to be doing or that you feel you should be doing as part of your, this is what teachers do because we're good teachers, we need to hear about that as well so that we can identify and and work with some of the the needs that you may have for for more support in some of those areas. If it's something that's, you know, regular day-in, day-out and it's middle of the road, yeah, we probably don't need to hear about that because we do have a limited amount of time. But of the outliers, I think that would be, that would be helpful.
Mr. Minnick?
I can't stand it, no, no, get Mike.
Mr. Lucas?
So, I I just wanted to take a minute to thank you for all the work that went into this plan. I I mean, I really think that this sets a standard for what a school improvement plan should look like. And it's obvious that, you know, there was a lot of vision and and challenging thinking that went into putting this together. And, you know, as you're talking about some of the, the aspects of the plan, you know, it made me think of the college course that I was able to take as a senior in high school and, you know, standing up on the roof of of a college classroom, looking at the stars in in an astronomy lab. You know, th- those kinds of things really are transformational for for students. And I, and I think that a lot of what you have in here, you know, will help to create, you know, those exceptional experiences for students that, you know, that they'll hold on to years down the road. And, you know, I I really appreciate too, you know, how how you put a lot of what I think are are stretch goals in this plan. I mean, I would be very surprised if we're able to implement everything in this plan over the course of the next two years. And I think that that's a really good thing because, you know, I don't think that, you know, plan should contain a balance of, you know, realistic attainable goals and also stretch goals that, you know, help us establish a a foundation for a vision of what we want the high school to look like years down the road. And, you know, I think that this really does that. I think it helps lay the groundwork for, you know, that, for for setting that vision and and helping us with strategic planning and, you know, budgetary planning down and, and helping us with strategic planning and, uh, you know, budgetary planning down the road. So, I think this is a great job and I, I really thank you for your effort. And this is exactly what I think school councils should, um, should do and exactly the, the kind of information that we should be including in our plans in the future. So, thank you.
Mr. Menon?
Yeah, I just wanted to echo what Mike had said. And one of the few advantages that longevity confers on me is the ability um, to s- to see these, these parades of SIPs coming up here and to really recognize finally, you know, I can't tell you how powerful it is to have a SIP presented to us that really has the feel that the council has really been involved, they've really been engaged. Um, that comes up, that is so persuasive in, in lots of ways to us. We've been a stickler about, about empowering the school councils and about pushing really to get school councils, you know, really actively involved in, in ways that maybe they hadn't been before. Um, and when we see a, when we see a plan like this, it just, it, it really does speak to us that, that there were a number of voices involved. Um, and that's very, very powerful. It, it's very heartening for me, um, to see that. So, um, so I, I, again, I echo what everybody said about how much we, we appreciate the work that you have all done, and that's very, very clear.
Dr. Orlando?
So, I'd like to bring us down to a little bit more of a practical level. Um, I don't think anybody sitting on our side of the table needs anything more in terms of accolades about what we've done. We didn't come here with any of that in mind. I don't know whether your longevity talks about age or how long we've been coming to this room. Um, I've been coming for, this is now my eleventh year. And I, I wanna really make this point to the people who've been coming here for as long as that. I've sat on this council for now, I think, what, five or maybe six years? I think you wanna know what we want from you. So I'm gonna tell you. You've got to realize that this school district is just coming off the two elemen- or all the elementary schools receiving over fifty million dollars worth of money. Where it came from, that's a little bit not like something we get all the time, but it's taxpayer dollar. This, it's nice to hear the other school improvement plans talk about the accomplishments. And you like to hear that, you were very thankful for what they did, and sure, we all are. But this school has been neglected for many years. Many of those things that you see on that piece of paper have been on there for at least four years, if not longer, and we haven't had the funds to accomplish that. Last year, after you went through the budget and you go through all your contractuals and, you know, that's the bulk of your budget increase, there's a few millions of dollars where you can play around with them. Uh, the mayor came across with a significant chunk of change. It was used for stabilization of the existing schools. I don't think the high school got very much to stabilize, both in terms of money or what they had. And so, if you get that big chunk of money, uh, I think it's important, we have outlined with significant cost estimates that I think are legitimate, that you look at several items and look at them real hard. Because this is where you're gonna wanna throw your dough, if you can control it. And yes, we need a nurse. You have to, it's a state requirement. But you need the dollars for teachers. You can't leave the budget session without a minimum of three FTEs. In order to expand your electives to business, maybe not all that inclusive, uh, or add courses, in the beginning, you have to be able to be willing to accept what Mr. Parent calls singleton classes. We accept them for the AP classes where we might have in times eight students in one class. Well, you wanna get a business program off the ground? You may have to pay a teacher to teach eight students. We don't like to do that, but that's the only way you're gonna get the program off the ground. So my estimates say that you need at least two hundred and fifty to three hundred K for teachers. Technology, I gotta tell you, I don't know what my colleagues feel, but I don't wanna hear a district-wide plan that may be five years in duration. They need technology here in terms of hardware. They don't have science computers that are worth a damn. So before we go putting anything in a five-year plan for the district, I want you to take a real hard look at what the technology needs are at this high school. I thank you for what you do, you have to listen to us. Safety, I've sent you the Sandy Hook Commission Report. I highlighted one area of the recommendations, take a look at it. The other schools, they all have, they have a buzzer system, they have an outside camera system. Two hundred and fifty more. So now we're up to five hundred plus, plus I think we estimated out for the science computers and a request, uh, for more computers in the, uh, library. Maybe another seventy-five, so do the math, not a lot of money. It's about time that you start making some recommendations as to where the money goes, recognizing that this school has been neglected and has some really big needs. And before we go throwing a lot of money to the schools that just had fifty million dollars, take a real hard look at this school improvement plan and make sure you fund those things that are absolutely essential because it's under a million dollars. And that's what I want from you. I don't want any thanks, I don't think these people want any thanks. But I will tell you, we worked hard. And I think Mr. Parent, in a synopsis of what we tried to do, did an outstanding job. And I think you should listen to him. And that's all I wanna tell you people.
Thank you. Any further comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Uh, next on our agenda is, uh, Mr. Lukens with our school committee planning calendar. And hopefully, we are looking toward a vote on that this evening?
Yeah.
Is this our second reading or a third reading, our fourth draft or?
It's the second reading in, in our school committee meeting, so I'll, I'll make this quick. I mean, we, we talked about this at the last meeting, um, and we, uh, went back and made the edits that came up, um, at that meeting. So, um, all of the, those edits should be incorporated in the new draft. And so, um, unless anyone has any new edits or, um, additional comment on the draft, I would certainly entertain a, a motion, um, on the calendar.
Motion to approve the school committee planning calendar.
Second.
Discussion.
Well done.
Exceptionally well done.
This is gonna be very helpful. Yes, I'm gonna do it, right? You ready? All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Yes, calendar passes, and I wanna thank your committee for all the work it's done to get this far, and particularly you as the chair, because you took on a Herculean task. And, uh, so congratulations.
Thank you. And I, I would just ask anyone if they, you know, if, this is gonna be a living document and as things come up, just let, let the, anyone in the curriculum committee know and we can take it on, um, within that committee to make updates, you know, throughout the years.
I just would like to point out that when we have a school committee meeting that is snowed out, that puts us behind the eight ball a little bit, so I just wanna make that, just wanna make that point.
I know. But I think all in all, lots of great things are happening and, uh.
I'd like the superintendent to prevent any more snow days on schedule.
The superintendent would like to prevent any more snow days.
Next on our agenda is a communications topic. Uh, and this is something that we have, I believe, thought about and grappled with, um, for most of this year, starting with a, um, communications ad hoc committee this summer. We have been running a pilot, um, which, uh, w- is up at this point. And the, um, I'm gonna let Audrey take this over in a minute, but, um, I believe that the communication ad hoc committee needs to hear from individual members of the school committee about, um, public conversation and topic forums. Be- before we begin, I'd like to give you a little bit of an update. Um, the superintendent and I had a conversation this week, last week. Um, and, uh, for the next, um, topic forum anyway, the superintendent would like to run that under her, um, proviso and run it as a community meeting, which she did successfully in the fall and has promised to do two or three times or.
It's really my, my superintendent's advisory council.
Right. So, um, and her thought, well, maybe, can you talk about your thoughts as to why you feel that that's?
Um, well, there are a number of things that I want to put out to the advisory council. And anyone is welcome on the advisory council. I had, um, last year, I had fifty people show up one night. And, um, I really wanna, it's an open, it's an open meeting. Um, the advisory council itself, where, where, we advertised it to the people who participated last year, but it's also on, it's, it's gonna be on the website as well. And I really would like to get some feedback from the community regarding, first of all, the budget process and what the interests are out there in the community. And I say that from my perspective because wa- until I present my budget to you, it's my budget. And once I present it to you, then it's your budget. So, I really want, I wanna hear from the community what they are interested in, in the budget process. I also wanna talk with them about the website and feedback on the website. And then, I'm gonna be rolling out, and that's a little bit further down on the agenda. I wanna talk with you about Let's Talk tonight. And that is a communication tool. So those are sort of my major three things that I would like to get some input from parents in the community. However, any topic is welcome in, in, um, the advisory council meetings. So, that's just my thinking on it.
So the other big part of, um, the discussion that I'd like to have this evening is about, uh, public conversation. We have not had it since, um, the new year began. As you recall, we extended it to an hour, um, because there was some feedback we received that we didn't have enough time to fully explore topics. So, um, the ad hoc, uh, committee, the communications ad hoc committee, um, would very much like to hear from each school committee member as to, um, what you see as the future of, um, public comment. So I'd like to kinda start with that piece and then move forward or on from there. Audrey, is there anything you wanted to?
Public conversation.
Pu- what, did I say comment again? I'm very sorry, I mean public conversation. I don't mean public comment.
Um, so, n- n- not, not, not really too much to add, except to say that, you know, because we're running this, I think the time has come to decide as a group, um, you know, how effective we, we feel it is, how well-attended. Um, it feels less working, what your, uh, superintendent is talking about with her, um, committee seems much more like a working group. Um, I think less, um, forums, or, you know, what, what you're proposing would be on people's radars, be on their calendar. Um, so the, you know, the feedback is, I guess, people are, are wanting to hear what we think individually and as a group, um, and where we wanna go from here, so.
And I, I think the, the, the other compelling new component is, um, the superintendent is gonna talk a little bit more about how Let's Talk is gonna work for us. So, I don't know if you want that information now in, in order to have this conversation, or you'd like to wait, because it's another avenue, um, for direct communication. And it is up and running right now. Um, it's not fully disseminated yet, but it's definitely much further along than it was the last time we spoke. Um, one of the things we heard from, from people is it's hard to come out and, you know, come to a meeting, um, once every other week for, you know, either a determined topic or an open topic. So, I, I, I guess we're at the point now where, um, we all need to be invested in this conversation and really decide with integrity what we're gonna do with public conversation.
Actually, that was exactly said like that. One person said to me, would you guys just decide what you're going to do? Just decide, so.
So pros, cons, I mean, uh, how do, how are we feeling? How, Mr. Decanter, thank you.
I, uh, as I think back over our experience with the concept of, of public conversation, I think all along we have been trying to make it work because it truly is, I think, a very valuable tool, or could be a very valuable tool, towards obtaining feedback and input from the community, towards having a discussion about issues facing our schools, on whatever topic it might be. However well-intentioned it has been, we have not been able to make it work on a practical basis. We have opportunities and plenty of them, to discuss things with each other, to discuss things within the committee. And having an additional hour set aside to have that conversation with one or two maybe other constituents does not really give us a picture as to what the community is feeling, nor do I think it's effective use of our time. If it were more effective use of our time, we'd see more people coming. And we have tried shorter versions, we've tried longer versions, we've tried assigning topics, we've tried not having topics. We've tried. But I just do not see that that is a communications means that the community at large values and would like us to invest our time in. I do believe that they value a robust and energetic website. We're moving in that direction. I do believe that they value a system of communication which allows them to get some feedback, some truly two-way conversation going with a very small attendance, that hasn't been happening. So, I, I, I think we prob- perhaps have reached the time that we need to pull the plug on the idea. Very good idea, but not necessarily the way the community would like to be communicated with. And we need to look at other things.
I just have to say that I think that as we move to, as we move into Let's Talk, I think you may find that once this is disseminated and people understand how this tool can be used, and we can, I can generate reports to find out what are the major areas of interest. I think that's gonna give you some direction, so that if we have a large number of parents that are interested in learning about, uh, you know, you can pick anything, um, what we're doing in technology, we can respond to that by deciding, you know, we've had a lot of questions about this.
Let's do a forum.
Maybe we need to do a forum on this. So I, I mean, I think this is gonna help direct us in the future.
I agree, I think forums are showing to be more and more valuable as.
Well, particularly based also on the attendance that the superintendent's, the superintendent draws. A, a crowd of fifty to sixty people, um, says something to me about the value of you doing that and making yourself available. And, you know, some of us or all of us attending that, so we can understand that as well, but.
I would rather see us take time to, say, instead of coming an hour early for a school committee meeting, take that hour or those two hours a month and maybe, uh, schedule a neighborhood coffee with. With people in our neighborhood and Let's Talk Education with one or two school committee members. Let's let's play around with how do we communicate with our constituents and see what we come up with. Um and and uh not try and keep forcing the issue of the period of public conversation.
Thank you. Any other feedback input? We need it from everyone.
Yeah.
Just Mike.
I'll go ahead. Um I mean, I think any open, I think open-ended conversations can be really tough. Sometimes they can be really valuable if there. Are things on on people's mind um and you you know, you get a good group together and o- other times, you know. Uh you know, they can be tough conversations if people don't have a lot to talk about or if there are very few people around to talk about. Or if there are people without the right um. You know, without the right knowledge to talk about them. So, you know, the the planning calendar that we just approved. Has fifty-six standing items that we wanna make sure that we cover over the course of a a of a calendar year on the school committee. And there's an additional fifty-nine items um that we think, that we think are important. But not important enough to ensure that they have a place um, you know, on the standing agenda for, over the course of the year. And you know, these are things like an update on the new teacher evaluation, update on early release days, place-based education. Anti-bullying, um s- uh food service, technology, I mean, things that are extremely important. Um but but yet don't even make the cut of the top fifty-six things that we need to do as a committee, so. You know, in terms of thinking about the value, um you know, of an extra hour um or two a month, I would, you know, I would. Rather see that hour spent by placing one or two of those items on the agenda and then soliciting. Um you know, more public uh comment and and conversation on those items during regularly scheduled. School committee meetings. Um then have an open-ended session um that's not on the record before uh a meeting starts. So so, you know, in ter- a- a- and I think, you know, the topic forums are important as well. You know, I agree that, you know, the forums that are hosted by um, you know, Susan and the rest of of Susan and Angela. And the rest of uh the administration can be really valuable ways to disseminate information and certainly, you know, we're all welcome to attend those. Uh and and engage with the public uh as well. So um so that, those are my, those are my thoughts in terms of. Recommendations.
Mr. Cole?
Um. Well, I I guess the way I see s- this play out is you really have three levels. Um you have a public conversation, you have a forum, and then my favorite, a public hearing.
Oh, no.
No, no, no. And and I I guess uh. I I'm interested to hear more about the Let's Talk because I think it's important to use uh. I guess up up-to-date, I don't wanna call it state-of-the-art, but up-to-date ways basically to solicit opinion. But also having an awareness that sometimes that can get skewed, you know. Uh you know, I don't want uh, and I really don't want to sh- watch the show, but I really don't want Let's Talk to turn into like voting for American Idol. You know, I frankly, I I mean, and and this is where I I go back to th- things like a public hearing. Because if you have a public hearing, you get on the record. So if there's serious, if there's some serious things we we need to discuss. And take, take a stand on and truly hear, uh I think, you know, that's, that goes to love of public hearing. And I, I think the forums are great. If the forums are bringing in people, that's a great thing. However, I I I still believe there is some value to being able to engage people in, you know, public conversation. Because uh that that works and I I think in certain situations. Uh I remember a few years ago when we had the uh Saturday. Presentations on schools where we had different.
It's a whole city, right?
Yeah, workshops set up, whether it be uh. And every, er- everything was covered and then if you missed it, there was another way to go get more information. And I felt that there was some pretty good give and take, but what I really saw more is I saw community people be able to show up to that and get their questions answered. And I thought that was helpful. So I think any. I look at co- co- the public conversation as a way to engage people, but I also think that, again. What our experience has been, are there ways we can try to bring more people in for that? That's with a question mark. However, I think whenever you have a hot topic, you're not gonna have a problem. People are gonna be here. If you have a hot topic, people are gonna be here and they're gonna wanna converse, so. Uh I see it as th- th- three levels, conversation, forums, public hearing. And but I'm also very interested in 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 seeing how the Let's Talk can maybe make all those. Uh more effective or again, round out the information coming in and provide some type of filter so we know it's. Reliable, so it's not just, you know, a handful of people making a bunch of phone calls.
And I think that's built into the program, right?
It it probably is and I don't.
And that's why I don't know if this is the chicken or the egg.
I don't need to ask a uh.
No, but.
A uh, you know, a a. A naive question. I just, you know, tha- that would be my only, you know, concern, but.
And Steve, let me just give you a a a little bit of an example of what Susan shared with me and she can do this, but it's timely. Um the school committee would have a page on Let's Talk and right now, I would be the one that would be responsible for. Um checking it all the time and y- you know, figuring out what I need to do. Um if there was a uh, you know, a finance question, I might contact you, Mr. Cole, and ask you to answer it. If it's a policy question, I might, you know, use um Mr. Decanter as as the resource. Or I, what what I can do is redirect the questions so that the questions don't go unanswered and. They're not a- they're answered by the most knowledgeable people on the topic. I might, you know, send things right to Angela and say. I don't know the answer to this, but I think it's important we get it out there. Tha- that's just an example of how I see the com- the school committee communicating in that. And then I think as Susan's gonna tell us, it's got built-in data tracking, so to your question, Mr. Cole, about validity. How many people is this? Is it skewed? Y- 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 you can keep track of that, you know, if you get seventy-five responses and they're all saying the same thing. Then you look at that data and figure out the reliability based on that, so. I won't say anymore. I already steal you, your thunder, but um Mr. Menon?
Well, um I've long been a proponent of public conversation. Um and i- it's sort of interesting in in doing this post-mortem because it really is a post-mortem. About whether we're gonna continue it or not. Um we've talked about it not working. We've talked about forums being really. Great ways to disseminate information and and I found, I find that kind of interesting because, you know. We have to define what we, what we were trying to do with public conversation before we can determine whether it's working or not. For me, as the person who instituted the idea, the idea of public conversation was a point of contact with the community. Was was a less formal opportunity to hear what the community had to say. And to be able to respond on a, just sort of a human level. Now, um I'm, I I agree that that um it may be that the entire community doesn't really want that. Um it may be that we haven't been able to figure out how to manage it, but when I started on the school committee. One of the points at which the school committee evaluated its effectiveness was its ability to get out a newsletter twice a year. Which is one-way communication, you know, disseminating information is one-way communication. Forums are great for disseminating information. They can also be really good for engaging in dialogue, although. That really takes an intention to do that, I think. Um I hesitate to give up that opportunity to to be held to a different level of accountability maybe than. Our our brethren and sister in on the city council, and that is to 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 be accessible to people, to be able to hear. If Let's Talk um, you know, is an effective mechanism for doing that, well, that's great, you know, I I mean, I've I've long believed. Um in, you know, something that that Audrey and I did once and found to be useful for us. Um and that Nick was suggesting. I I would love the idea of doing office hours. I would love the idea of having an opportunity. For people to have access to us, to to talk to us, to ask us questions. That to me was, you know, did public conversation work? Did it give people an opportunity to to interface with us, to talk with us? Yeah, it did for a very small group of people, a small, consistent group of people. I usually found it pretty useful. It usually helped me take the pulse on some level of what, what people were thinking. So so I hesitate to give it up without having something else in place before we give it up. I recognize that it it uh it has been uh been used by a by a small group of people. Um I wish that that we had been able to figure out how to engage more people in it. And there were times when we did engage a lot of people in it and found it to be really, really useful. I mean, I, you know, the the, you know, when we talked about doing rent here, that was an extraordinarily useful public conversation, you know? The conversation that we had about science was very painful, but it was extraordinarily useful. And I think um it was the spark that really, really motivated us to to look at what we needed to do. So, you know, those, I I recognize those were far and 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 few between. I I I'm hesitant to give up um that that opportunity to connect with people without having something to replace it. So that's what my thinking is on it. But again, I don't, I, you know, I don't. Our our job is to disseminate information. I I like to think. In my definition of what I do, I've gotta be available to listen. I don't always wanna hear what people wanna tell me, but. My, I have a responsibility and obligation to be accessible and to listen, to hear that, so.
Audrey, are you?
So, yeah, so I've given this a lot of thought and um and I appreciate what what you've said. Um but I kind of decided to look at it um as a an individual who cares about our schools. Two kids in two different schools. I feel like I'm involved and if I wasn't on the school committee, I'm not sure I would go to those. I tell people all the time, here's my cellphone number, feel free to text or email me. They always text or email me. Nobody really calls me. And I think if I wasn't here and I wanted to talk to somebody. I would go on the website, get your email, send you an email, send you an email. Um I I think it's just a, you know, I I do like the face-to-face, but I think that. Um today, people are busy. Um it's not that they don't care and sometimes when I see the turnout, I think people don't care. I know that they care. Um but they can drop us an email, they can call us on the phone, um they can know our calendar. I think the ex- most successful um public conversations have been the science when. Basically, it was in shambles and the public knew it and and demanded to meet with us. That can still happen. If, I mean, I hope it doesn't happen, but if something really critical comes up and we all are getting emails about it. We can say, you know what, let's have a public meeting, let's, let's invite the public to talk about the science or let's talk about the, you know, engage New York, whatever. Um I think we can still do that. We have the flexibility, so um I just feel like it's a poor use of time. It makes me feel like. I I could look around and say, nobody cares because nobody's coming or very few people are coming, um and I don't think that that's the case. I'm very excited about Let's Talk. Um you know, again, I go back to the ad hoc committee when I, as a group, we broke out and we came up with. A list of ways that we can be communicated with, far more than other communities. Um some do not put their phone numbers out there in public on school committees. They only do email. Um and I can't, I can't see a stone that's unturned with how people can reach us if they really want to, and if they really want to, they will. So for me, I think it's it's, you know, time to put it on the shelf. We can always relook at it again. If we get a public outcry to, I loved those forums, we can talk about it, but I think. Um I I'm I'm anxious to give a Let's Talk and and uh a try and and see how how it goes. So I'm in, I'm in favor of of trying something different.
Any other further, any further comment? Um I I also think that what member said about um moving in a direction that is. Is gonna give us as much information as we can. I don't think this needs to be or should be one layer. There should be all these layers. I like the i- idea of, um I don't mean to burden the superintendent more. But I think that's been a, that was a positive feedback you got from doing those. Um i- i- I I think you said, I, and I can't remember, please correct me, how many, how many per year would you do? If we did not have, I I'm just asking, if we didn't have public conversation, what what would you think about your advisory?
Probably three.
So I see that as a, as a, as an opportunity. You you could structure those perhaps. At the end of it, maybe we could have office hours, we could break up into small groups, I don't know. I think um. Um uh um what was the other tier we just talked about? Um the Let's Talk, I think we should give that, at that a chance. I think um it lets us know specific, fairly specifically or more specifically. Um what really is on a a a a a group of people's minds. Um I've been a little concerned about public conversation. Um the attendance is really poor and. I do think we've tried different mechanisms to increase that. Um and it just hasn't, hasn't worked, so I'm I'm very ready to try. Again, these other venues and um get feedback from that and. I think um the one thing I heard loud and clear is every member feels that it's critical for us to communicate with the public. Um I couldn't agree with that more and listen to the public. Um I'm just not sure that. Public conversation is the forum. Um you know, um. I don't think we're all participating in it fully as a committee. Um I think a couple of people have chosen. To not be involved um and I just would like to see other things begin to happen. So um I guess with that, I'd like you to do Let's Talk and.
All right.
It's all its gorgeous, wonderful possibilities for us.
Let me jump right in.
All right.
Um we actually have, Let's Talk is live right now, but it's only live for Kathy and myself because we're doing a very soft launch of it. The administrators are going to be trained uh next Wednesday, week from tomorrow. Um and after that, there will be, I I gave you an example of a letter to the staff. I also have one that's going to be going out to students in the middle school and the high school because we want, we want them to be involved. So what happens is um when you hit the the Let's Talk button, you can. Here's, here's what you see. You see, welcome to Let's Talk. Let's Talk is a communication channel that facilitates an ongoing dialogue. Between New Report Public Schools leaders, parents, staff, students, and community members. This is a place to start the conversation with your questions, comments, concerns, suggestions, and yes, compliments. You have the option to submit your ideas anonymously or with, or with your contact information for a personal reply. From the appropriate New Report Public Schools administrator or staff member. If you do provide your contact information, you can expl- expect a reply within forty-eight business hours. Now, we randomly picked Kathy Manning and myself and along with the the Let's Talk folks. Randomly picked the items that are there. They can be changed. So I want you all to take a look at the page. If you have suggestions and you want something put up there, we can put it up there. We divided it into categories. It's Let's Talk about district website feedback, the weather, 'cause we thought that would be a paywall. Ideas for the Brown School, School Committee, New Report Education Foundation, Calendar, School Choice. Community Engagement, Common Core, Education Business Coalition. Let's Talk about the district goals in two thousand and fourteen, fifteen. We listed the the goal areas. Central Office, Superintendent, Health Services, Payroll and Insurance, Budget and Finance, Special Education. Central Office, Superintendent, Health Services, Payroll and Insurance, Budget and Finance, Special Education, Human Resources, Transportation, Technology, Curriculum. Schools, Bresnahan, mulling up, and it lists all the schools, and then lastly, there's just School Committee and then this public comment in there for the School Committee. So what happens when you click on any one of those? What comes up is, says, what's on your mind? Subject, they type in what the, what the subject is. This is a question, comment, suggestion, concern, compliment. I am, check off, Newburyport Public School student, public school employee, Newburyport, uh, parent guardian, community member. They can check off any one of, one of those. Would you like a response for this dialogue? Yes, I welcome a response, then they have to put in their information, they hit submit. Automatically when they hit submit, they get a thank you, we have received your question or your comment. And someone will be responding to you within forty-eight hours. So it's a, it's an interactive system. So if you go to the homepage on our website, you'll see the nav, the, the maroon navigation bar that is across the top. You will see Let's Talk is all the way over on the right. And it's there, where we will train the administrators, we'll get the information out to parents and students as well as, we're gonna do something out to the community that will be on the website and we'll see where it goes. So, that's it in a nutshell. It can provide all kinds of data to us in terms of the number of questions that we, um, what are the topics, what's trending, what's getting the most, uh, questions on the website. Uh, it also will, will, I will have access to know, how are we doing in terms of our forty-eight hours? Are, is everyone responding within that timeframe? Do I need to have a conversation and say to Cheryl?
It's instant.
Cheryl!
Yeah, I'm talking.
You know, forty-eight hours, that's our rule.
Business hours.
You know, and we said business hours because, you know, so it, it could be a Friday and somebody might not look at it again until Monday, so. Um, but I, it's one more tool, it's one more tool to allow people to ask questions and to make comments and to let us know how we're doing overall.
And, and is it true that what could come out of that would be a topic forum on something that was, you know, hot and heavy? Like, I'm sure, um, you know, Engage Math would have wound up on there, just by manner. I think, uh, Transportation would have wound up on there because of, you know, a wide spectrum of interest in it. So it's gonna give us, um, I think it's gonna generate topics, but it also clearly puts the responsibility on the school district to communicate in, in a timely manner. So, um,
That, that I think was one of the big learnings from our ad hoc communications group is that people are frustrated by the lack of response.
Right.
So this is, that's, that's critical.
And it's also not me answering a question about curriculum when I know that I can forward it to Angela and say, you know, this is you, I, I don't feel comfortable. Or I communicate with Angela and I say, here's the question, can you talk to me about where we are and then I communicate back and
And it's a system that you continuously refine and it gets stronger and stronger as you go along because you identify who the key people are and, and, for example, if Patty gets a phone call that has to do with transportation, she's not gonna write one of those pink slips anymore. She's gonna, she, she will be able to go into Let's Talk and have it directly go to Nancy Lysick so that Nancy Lysick is going to get, uh, an automatic email that lets her know that she has gotten a communication through Let's Talk. So that there, there, we have to train our staff how to use it as well.
Oh, sure.
So it's gonna take a little while, but I'm, I'm hoping that, and I, I want you all to go home and practice. I want you all within the next couple of days to go on to Let's Talk and to share a comment, a concern, a compliment, and I'd like you to try it.
So wh- what happens though if you, if someone sends something in but doesn't leave, doesn't want a response, doesn't leave a contact information? What happens to that?
Then, then
'Cause that, there may be some valuable stuff in there, so how is that like collated or whatever?
That will, that will come directly to me, things like that, you know, unless if it were a transportation concern, it would go to Nancy, let's say, or if it were curriculum, it would go to Angela. And I think that as part of the training for everyone involved, what we have to explain is that when you get those kinds of comments, those are the ones that you wanna pay attention to because if somebody isn't, if, if they have a concern and they're not comfortable, then that's an issue.
Yeah.
So, so we need, we need to pay attention to those, so. But I, I just would encourage you to go in, try it out and see how it works.
It's very intuitive. Susan used me as a guinea pig and it was fun, it was fun to get a, you know, to get a response back to put it in.
I can see a lot of the conversations that are currently happening on Facebook coming down to that.
I hope so.
I, I'm hoping they will because when they happen on Facebook and, and the players aren't, all the players aren't there, then you're not having the kind of interaction that you want. So I'm hoping that we can redirect people to hear. And I, other school systems have, have had very, very good experience with this. And the other, the other thing I wanted to say to you that I should've said in the beginning is that we had an email from Christina Jackson, who is the woman we've been working with today. And one of the reasons we were gonna launch this with, um, we're gonna launch it a little bit earlier, but we held off because the email that we had today is that they are introducing their upgrade to the, they have a brand new upgrade to the entire system that is happening on Saturday. So it's perfect timing in terms of us training the leadership team next Wednesday because we will, this will all be upgraded and this is their, their brand, this, their newest version, so.
Um, let me ask about cost and recurring cost and is this a license?
This is a license. This is, we, we, when we brought this in, we signed a two-year contract with them.
So does that include any updates free or?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
It's a, it's a, a standard fee, don't ask me, for the exact amount. It's in the five thousand dollar range a year ballpark. So we have a two-year contract with them and we're, obviously, we're gonna be evaluating this and if we don't like it, we're gonna, we won't keep it, if we like it, we wanna continue to use it. But we'll have data, we'll have data to go on.
And even if, if it's anonymous data, correct? All that will be kept, it won't, you know, and if it needs, go ahead, you were gonna say, I, I'm just
Sometimes the anonymous data i- is actually very useful.
Right, you were saying that, but, and I was kinda responding to what Steve was saying, it will be accounted for and it will be in part of a database of
I mean, I'll be able to tell you, you know,
It's incredible.
On a monthly basis or even a weekly basis, we have had this number of inquiries this month. This, this percentage was, uh, people wanting a response, this percentage was anonymous. Here are the top five topics, you know, I mean, it's that finite, the data that you can get to, so. There's a, there'll, there'll be a lot of good information that will come out of it, I, I suspect, I hope.
I do too. Mike?
Are, are the replies done through the system or outside it by just like your email account?
No, they're done within the system.
So, so you're able to monitor adherence to the, to Business Day, uh, responses?
Yes, yes, and, um,
She already told you she was gonna get on me if I
The, the other thing that it, it, the system is very intuitive in that, um, and it's, it's very simple. It's a very simple system to use. But you respond and it, it keeps, uh, a recording, if you will, of every interaction that you have, so that if you're having an ongoing conversation with someone, you have all of that and it's archived, so that doesn't go away. And, and you can sort of see every step of the way. Sometimes you have to say to someone, I need to get more information on this, and that's one of the options that you have, is to say to them, um, I need to get more information, I will get back to you on this. You also can, um, in certain circumstances, the system can remind you. You have to reply to, so.
The, um, conversations are, it's capable of multi-party conversations that are visible to everybody?
That's a, I don't know the answer to that, Bruce.
Because if the conversa- conversations won't move from Facebook if they're just one-to-one conversations and that doesn't, again, that doesn't address, that doesn't substitute for public conversation.
I'll follow up on that. I, I would think that you could, but I don't. I'll have to, I'll have to inquire on that.
Yeah, because what makes people comment or gets people going is commenting on what other people have said.
Right. Well, and there are several groups out there now. There's the elementary PTO group, there's optimizing the learning group, there's Newburyport Commons, there's, yes, that's what I'm saying.
The point is that you see the whole discussion on Facebook.
Right, right.
And you go adding to it.
And this isn't really a social media like that, is it? Well, I, I, I'm, I'm, I wanna talk to Christina about that.
Yeah, so it's not, it's, you know, again, it, it doesn't substitute on a purposeful level what public conversation has the capability of doing. And it also doesn't, you're not gonna get traffic from Facebook there if people aren't gonna be able to respond to each other. You'll get inquiries, which is, which is fine.
Um, the other thing, the, the other thing I wanna tell you that I've been doing, um, I'm in all those, um, Facebook groups, as I think you all know. And, um, if there's a particular topic out there that I feel, um, Susan needs to be made aware of, I call her and I say, this is what's happening on Facebook today and let me give you, um, an instance of how that worked. Um, everybody was talking and two school committee members, um, contacted me about the safety of the roofs during, roofs during the, um, school vacation. It also was rampant on Facebook, what are we doing, um, can we get in there, whatever. So I contacted, um, Susan and said, I think we need to do some kind of a response. And that's why she put out, um, on, I think it was Blackboard Connect, um, an update on the roofs, the, the, you know, Steve Bergholm wrote a report. So I see all of this meshing and crossing and, and, you know, um, when things are out there, um, and I feel like there's a snowball effect and there were some that had like fifty comments. Um, I, I'd call Susan and let her know that and then, you know, she either decides what to do or we decide what to do together or we brainstorm, so. I'm not, I, I'm agreeing with you, Bruce, I don't think that, and Angela, I don't think this is sort of, this is so much a social media as a one-on-one, um, but if they're making improvements to the system, that might be something that they would consider in the future, so.
It's, it's, you know, it's one more way to communicate and to offer to the public, um, to have a, a direct pipeline to, um, school district employees and as well as members of the school committee.
A lot of people, I mean, if you've got a question about the lunch program, you can go right in there and you'll get a response in forty-eight hours, so I, I
Yeah, one, I mean, one of the things, you know, as you know, I've been asking the public for feedback on the website and I ha- I, I think, I may have shared this with you already, but I was at a PTO meeting and one of the things that, um, one of the parents said to me was, I'm really frustrated that I can't just get the lunch menu, that I always go to the, that it goes to the Chartwell's website first and then I have to dig. I said, well, that's something, it's easy that we can correct, so we were able to do that, just put the lunch menus out there. Um, one of the other things that, um, that we have the capability to do on the website is that we can, um, put banners across the website for, you know, whether it be an alert, an emergency notification, that can go up there, we can have scrolling messages on there. There's a lot of different capabilities that we have now with this website, um, that, and we're just beginning to really understand all the different things that we can do. So, um, it's been pretty, um, pretty, um, fun, I guess is the word I wanna use, to really be learning about some of the capabilities that we have with this website, so. And, and we continue to, to, um, to expand to the things that we're doing with it, so.
And I like the option of, um, students being able to be involved as well because I think there's a lot of knowledge out there. And, um, if kids need a place to go and make a comment that's, you know, um, either doesn't have a name but is a concern, um, that's just another avenue to help with, um, you know, either instances or concerns that our students have, so. I, I would like to see us go that route and, um, continue to not have public conversation as we've had it. Um, I don't know if we need to vote on this, but
I'd like a vote.
I, I really would like to, um, this has been a topic on, of conversation for a long time. And I, and I think we need to deal with it and deal with it in public and deal with it now, so, um, if you'd like to make a motion?
I move that we end public conversation, um, as an adjunct to the school committee meetings.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
I would just note that the rules and regulations document would, would, should be updated reflecting this decision if the vote is in the affirmative.
Mm-hmm.
Another thing for the policy committee to work on. Any further discussion? Do we need to do a roll call? Or are you comfortable with it? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Um, opposed?
Opposed?
No.
So that's one, two, four, two, two, so, and the mayor not being here, so. Um, that's what we will do and, uh, w- we will certainly revisit this, this, um, after, um, you know, Let's Talk has been up and running for, you know, fully implemented. Um, we will bring that back to a, an agenda for the school committee to address again a- a- as a whole group. So I thank you for that and I thank you for the conversation, um, it needed to be done. So why don't we just continue quickly, um, with the superintendent's report?
Well, we've actually, I've already actually talked about the advisory committee and the forums where, where we've already talked about.
You're on a roll, so I'm looking at the clock, we're doing well.
Let me jump to, uh, to snow days and just talk with you a little bit about that. Um, just so that you are aware, we have, um, we have used five snow days as of this point. Originally, we were scheduled to, our last day of school was scheduled for the eighteenth of June. We are now at the twenty-fifth of June. That allows us the twenty-sixth, which is a Friday, and Monday, the twenty-ninth, if we were to have more snow days, because the thirtieth has to be a teacher day, which is the last one. Now, having said that, I know that, um, in speaking with Kathy and with Angela that in the past, one of the things that we have done is that we have brought students, um, into school on Good Friday. And that's an option that we would have and that is, uh, April third. Obviously, that would necessitate a change in the calendar and a vote from the school committee if we get to that point. I mean, we can hope that we will have no more snow days and that the twenty-fifth will, will be it. Certainly my fervent hope, but, um, I would like to sort of keep the option of Good Friday out there. I also have to have this conversation with the Teachers Association, which I will be meeting, uh, with Pat Levitt tomorrow. So, but I wanna make you aware of my thinking at this point. Um, I certainly think that at another time, we wanna have a conversation about whether or not, and I think we wanna get feedback from the community, um, as to whether or not we want to look at maybe shortening a February break and looking at long weekends, or maybe we wanna look at some other things. We're already coming back next year before Labor Day. And, um, you know, I think that we want to, if we're gonna be in this pattern, this weather pattern in New England where we've had significant snow days and we know that's, at least that's what they're telling us, it's going to continue, then I think it behooves us to really look at what our options could be. But I think it's, it's, has to be part of a much larger conversation.
So you're saying shorten February break next year?
I'm saying that that may be one of the things that we might wanna consider.
Yes, but frankly, that's one of the most likely times you're gonna get snow. Why have school on a week that you're likely to get a lot of snow? I mean, we got kinda hammered last week, didn't we, at least one day?
We did, but we've also gotten hammered in December and January before, so it's, it's
But I mean, I would think maybe April would be a different But I mean, I would think maybe April would be a different month or a better time, but.
That's certainly, you know, I I think we can be open to either.
Yeah. Yeah.
There, there's also been talk out there again on social media about one vacation in in March. So, um, and then I think, uh, Superintendent Mulqueen today, um, in the paper, talked about, um, having, they're in a different circumstance. They're, 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 uh, their high school kids have to make up, what?
Ten days.
Ten days. So they're talking about, um, school on Saturdays and also.
Saturdays.
Saturdays. Online learning.
Well, but, but, but you see, that's, these are things that that could happen in the future that
Sure.
you you do, you know, um, a flip classroom that day, y- 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 you know, so.
There was a reason that I sent you that the, the commissioner's report in your packet because you you need to understand that there's pretty stringent guidelines there. And there is no, we are not like New Hampshire where we can do those backpacks that they, you know.
Snow packs.
Yeah, we don't really have that option. I mean, there, he's talking about significant time on learning. And there has to be interaction with a teacher.
Right.
And, you know, we haven't vetted yet how many of our kids don't have access to technology, what kind of technology they have access to. There's a, there's a whole lot of information that we need before we can even begin to explore things like that. I'm not saying that we shouldn't, we should be exploring those things, and we should be having the larger conversation about what our options might be. I think it it behooves us to look at all of the different options available. Um, I don't think that there's any likelihood of the commissioner saying that we're not gonna go a hundred and eighty days. They've been very clear.
He's indicated that several times, but.
Yeah, he, he's been very clear on that. The, the other thing that I I just wanna, um, also, that was not on, um, the agenda tonight that I do wanna make you aware of is that the, uh, Department of Ed has allowed us to have an extended, um, alternative, if you will, for MCAS. And allowed us to cha- to move it back a little bit because of the lost days to snow. And we are exploring that as a leadership team as to what the impact of that is going to be. It has to be a district decision. It can't be a school-by-school decision. Um, but that that would also involve possibly canceling one of our release days. Um, maybe canceling it altogether and making it be a full day of school because April second is when the long comp is going to be given. And that was.
And the new schedule.
And that was, that was, uh, on the reschedule, and that is one of our release days. So we are going to have a conversation about that. I have to let the State Department know by Thursday. But I want you to be aware that we are having those internal conversations right now. I will certainly, once the, once the leadership team has a rec- a recommendation, I will certainly share that with everyone. But I haven't had a chance to talk with all the administrators yet. Um, so I may be coming back to you and saying I'd like to make a change in the calendar. So I just want you to be aware of that.
Yeah, I just wanted to offer a comment on, on, um, what Miss Sweeney talked about, about the conversation about whether we should go a block vacation day and whether, you know, whether it take two weeks. Um, we've, we've had our five snow days upcoming in February. So I think personally, it doesn't make any sense to me to do two-week vacation in March when you have a much greater likelihood that you're gonna get hammered in February. And if you're gonna go to a two-week vacation, it seems to me that February is the time to do it, not March.
I don't think we're talking about a two-week.
No, but, but we're, we're, we're talking about, uh, what I've read on social media where the people were saying to avoid one week in April and one week in February and do a two-week block.
Oh, I thought it was a one, get rid of February and April, do one week in March.
One week.
One week.
Right.
Do one week in March and not.
You'd kill working parents if you did two weeks.
Next week, you realize. Um, so what I would like us to do before that meeting is to refamiliarize ourselves with Susan's evaluation document. There were some questions about it. Um, I think there were some tweaks that people talked about that, um, Audrey, I recall you saying there was one thing you found very hard to rate because you didn't know what it meant. So I I just wanna make sure that we know what our document is because then Susan has also provided us with, um, her SMARTphones. So the next step is for, um, Susan and I to sit with her SMARTphones and, um, put them into the four standards and see if we have one for each standard or how we're gonna focus Susan's evaluation. Then we need to talk about, um, the indicators, um, what elements we would like her to focus on. And also, I'd like to have a discussion next week on what is appropriate evidence in your minds. So that, um, there are no surprises out there. And I think we all were pretty proud of the evaluation document last year, but there were a couple of tweaks. And I can't remember all of them. Mr. Decanter, I don't know if you wrote them down as you, your policy committee did a lot of work on that, or?
Um, the main one that I remember was, uh, Audrey's request for having things be more specific in terms of the metrics.
Right, easier to understand what, what, how you were doing the rating.
That's right.
So I I I really would like us to do some work before we come to the meeting next week and, um, be prepared to, uh, number one, tweak the document if we feel we need to. Talk about, do we want, um, Susan evaluated on all four standards this year? Last year, we agreed on what the elements were under those standards so that she wasn't comple- uh, uh, you know, doing every single thing. And then I do re- recall the question of, um, what we would like to see as evidence came up as well. So I want her to have a clear roadmap, um, and and not just a. So I'm really gonna ask you to prepare for next week in looking at that document and coming in, um, ready to have a discussion.
Everybody should have copies of their own document because it's evaluation. That's probably what you should look at.
Yeah.
Rather than, because that way.
Compilation. No, we should look at our own.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that, that's.
I'm happy to send the empty copy out to everybody, but I'm not sure it would be as useful as looking at their own.
And and I'm thinking that unless someone doesn't have it, that's kind of a waste of paper if we're gonna make some changes next week.
Use paper?
Well, it it winds up.
Use paper?
Can you, okay, let's, let's. Anyway, um, and I thank you for that. Joint Ed did not meet this month because, uh, we got snowed out. Finance?
Meeting on March twelfth.
Policy?
Uh, we met today and had a productive meeting. Uh, first of all, we reviewed the fingerprinting policies and all the details of it with Nancy Leisik, and, uh, we are satisfied first that the, uh, the program is working well. There has been very little pushback on the part of teachers or parents. Um, and secondly, we are satisfied that the privacy of individuals, whether they be staff or parents, is, uh, being protected and is being thought about, uh, so that, uh, we're, all of that is taken into consideration.
Can you refresh me as to what the deadline is for school committee members to go through that?
It goes alphabetically. And, uh, those of us who are in the A through D are have until the end of March to do it.
Oh.
So, other people who have names further on, further on down the alphabet have a little more time.
Do I, do we know what that calendar is?
Well, it's being sent out to us by Nancy.
Oh, perfect, okay. With locations and times and.
Yep. Apparently, the locations and times have increased.
Well, that's the thing I heard was the bottleneck that there weren't enough places.
Yeah.
Very convenient now.
Are there more places?
Yeah.
Yes, more places, more times, closer, more variety.
Closer? Great.
What is, what is the closest place now?
I don't know.
Um, I, yeah, I think it's.
I don't know.
Right, right downtown.
Yeah.
Before it was Haverhill and Beverly, I think.
Triple A, they do registry now too.
There's, um, there's more locations in Haverhill too. There's one in, I wanna say.
Would, would Kathy send it out? Well, I guess, I just wanna be prepared to answer that question when, because people have brought it up in the past and they've complained about having to go to Haverhill.
Right.
There's a closer one than that. I can't remember where I went.
So, so we will be in out, in in clumps of alphabetical order?
Clumps of alphabetical order for the school committees, yeah.
Looks like I'm going by myself, huh?
Yeah. That's how the te- the teachers are viewed that way too.
Um.
Oh, well, maybe I can find a friend there.
So, let's see. Uh, then the, uh, couple of other things. Uh, we talked about, uh, bullying policy, discipline policy, and quota costs, uh, on discipline. Uh, trying to figure out how we can make them make sense in relation to each other. Uh, we know that bullying policy must not be a standalone policy by state law. We can't be up to that too much. Uh, the superintendent suggested, and I think it's a good suggestion, that we meet, uh, to review our overall objectives in this whole area with, uh, our attorney. And, uh, so we, we also had a discussion on, uh, the need for some way of putting all of these under one umbrella, uh, or statement, which would allow us to cross-reference policies and make sure they're consistent with each other. And so that, that is what we're, we're shooting for in that. Uh, in terms of, uh, new business, uh, we are, really came down to the realization that we have way more on our, on our platter because it's bigger than a plate, uh, than we can handle within our regular sessions. Uh, uh, we have a lot of policies that the superintendent has asked us to act quickly on in addition to the fact that we need to figure out how to consolidate and make sense out of these stacks of paper. Uh, and, uh, so we will have a, our next meeting will be a all-day Saturday morning, or all-Saturday morning meeting of March the seventh, um, from nine to twelve, uh, arrested. Try and make some headway into all of that, uh, all of that stuff.
I appreciate that. That's wonderful.
And insurance money is behind the, the bagels. I'm bringing the insurance money.
I'm not on that committee. All right, I'll come. You can. Curriculum instruction and accountability.
So we, we, our January meeting was snowed out, so our next meeting is tomorrow, the twenty-fifth at five thirty.
Thank you. Anything further that anybody, Mr. Menon?
Um, we've been, our, our Brown School, um, committee has been marginally dormant and snowed in. Um, trying to set a meeting up for next week. Um, we did, by the way, have a tour of, uh, an Amesbury Artists Center building that was very exciting, um. And that happened today. It was really neat, um, and functional and working and actually turning a profit, so, um. And, uh, the, all the people in that building said that they would love to be in a place in Newburyport that did something similar. So, um, so that was one thing. And I, I, I do wanna also give you, give everybody a heads up. Um, the, um, I did go to the, uh, commission meeting on tolerance and diversity last night, and they have set a date for a forum. The forum is gonna be entitled, Newburyport says no to prejudice, a community forum. And next week, um, I know that the, the forum is being convened by that commission. They are looking for active partners, and the definition of active partners are groups in the community that are gonna be supportive, affirmatively supportive of, of the goals of the forum, which are to discuss, um, it, it comes out of the incident that happened here at the high school, but it's gonna take up a larger view of, of difference and diversity and tolerance and prejudice. Um, and, um, and in addition to getting sort of an affirmative, uh, notion or motion of support, um, they're looking for help in publicizing the event as well. So, um, I may ask somebody from the commission to come in and just briefly describe what they're hoping to accomplish at the forum.
What's the date, Bruce?
The date has been set for Ap- Tuesday, April seventh at seven PM. They would like to do it in one of the schools. Um, they were hoping to be able to do it in the Breznerhand Library, but I think we've discovered that that's the last day of the book sale at the library. I don't know if the gym is available or being used for basketball that night. Um, but they were really.
Maybe we'll get great book sales.
They, yeah, they did, they did, they were hopeful about using the Breznerhand, but they could go to the Knoc as well. So I'll, I'll talk to Kathy about that tomorrow. Uh, but they are also gonna ask the, uh, youth commission, they're gonna ask the Commission on Disabilities Youth Services to partner up with them as well, and they would like this, they'd like an affirmative, uh, action on our part that we're interested in partnering with them. So.
So be thinking.
And again, I'll have them come in next week just briefly to talk about it to, to us, and ask that to be put on the agenda.
Oh. Put that on the agenda. Thank you. And then we'll have a further discussion as to what we feel the school committee role would be in, in that. Anything further? More or snow days? Can we, uh, can I hear a motion to adjourn soon?